Hey Mike, how are you?
Good. So for next week for the land use.
Oh yeah, those meetings, what do you?
Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday.
Are they at night, I hope?
Yeah, five to seven. So Mike Scott's already got Wednesday and Thursday, but we need two for each night.
Okay, um, let's see, Wednesday, what are the dates, just tell me the dates.
Twelve thirteenth and fourteenth.
Twelve thirteenth and fourteenth, I think I can do Wednesday.
Okay.
Um, let me make sure. Make sure there's nothing. Yeah, put me down for Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay.
If you could be there maybe fifteen.
What time do they start?
Five o'clock.
Five, okay.
So like if you come fifteen, twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes early? So what's the plan, just kind of just, uh, people are just gonna mill around wanting to?
Open houses, yeah, type thing where they come and go. They have four tables, one of you, each table with maps on it. People could come up and you could talk to them as a group or individuals, however.
Okay.
However you guys want it.
Alright, sounds good, alright, yep.
Okay, yeah, we'll give you somewhat of an update of.
Yeah, what's kind of where you guys are going, cause I have no, you know, I haven't been able to be at your meetings, so, you know, just to see what's going on, okay, no worries, yep.
Okay.
Yep, I will do Wednesday, better put it in my calendar right now.
Also send out a reminder.
You're gonna send a reminder, okay, perfect, so Wednesday the thirteenth. Four forty-five. And oh, where is that one?
That one will be here at this park.
In this park, okay.
Yeah.
And there are a couple hours you said?
Yeah, five to seven.
Okay. Quick question. What zones are?
Except that's water to do in a car wash when you drive. Yeah, in Vegas we parked our car off on the grass. And now we can't even have grass in our car. Because of like a hundred dollars to wash your car. Back in the eighties. Yeah, Las Vegas is still developing, they didn't want to have a war since I was a kid. Yeah, my dad said Las Vegas is the meadows. In terms of the Spanish translation, that all that water was coming out here. You went to grow a commission to keep back and it was meadows anymore, it was desert again. Yeah, and you didn't know where the road was and the cul-de-sac was. So you're off to the side a little bit.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
You gotta make sure you're a little straight, yeah. Okay. Yeah, no, I do some of filter for Black Desert because everybody's focusing on that. But all the other guys, it's kind of far again. It's a secretary and doctor today, he actually, it was the darker red. I've been fixing sprays in Hurricane right now, looking at the cellar of our house. A little closer, I have four empty lots next to me. And I get all the tumbleweeds. And then the guy up the street throws his back of the road, so it comes down to to me. Yeah, so I'm collecting all the favorite tumbleweeds. This will be a quick Christmas light show. Okay, and I don't know how to do this. Both both starter or share. I was reading an article about California, Nevada's where they collect the tumbleweeds. And they would get a bit too. There was stones.
Hi, how are you?
Hi Dale.
Good. We were talking about you last night. Well, Kristy Pike was out there doing her little thing and I came to.
Oh, did she?
I came because she's, um, she's always like, I'd like to see a friendly face, can you come? I'm like, sure, I'll come, so we were sitting out there for a little bit. And she mentioned she had met with you before the meeting that we, that she had out there, so I said, well, that was good.
Yeah, she's. I think she'd be good up there. I find myself in her camp. I've knocked the other candidates and.
Yeah, I do too, she's actually asked me yesterday afternoon and she goes, do you think you would sit in my booth? Like it's like Saturday, and I'm like, yeah, sure, I will. Well, I know her from accounting because she's the, you know, the children's justice center director. We never really met like, where we talked, but we knew each other from meetings and things, you know, and, uh. She's pretty smart, yeah. Hey Mike, how are you?
Good. I'll tell you what, man, you are, you are something. Hey, is that, is that latest version you sent the same that you sent a few days earlier?
Latest version of the resort would, yes.
Cause I copied it then, so I don't need.
Yes, it's the same one, I was hoping to get something back from Stan by noon today, but it was short-term, so.
Yeah, I talked to him actually Tuesday. And he asked if we could, I'd like to extract some comment, I said, yes, but you've been told there on Thursday, so send which.
Mike, did you send more than just this April sixth thing?
Um, let's see what you. I said chapter seven.
I just copied this.
Okay, and wait a minute, that's different.
That's, so did, did you send something else besides this?
E F.
Here Dale, you can have my copy.
I just, I have.
That's seven.
I have seven, but I don't.
And then I did this afternoon, I did six.
Oh, I missed that, because I was, I was busy.
Here, here's.
It's in here, okay, oh.
Oh, you've got it too, well, we got plenty of yours.
Oh, so it's right here anyway, okay.
Right there.
Oh, alright, okay, well, I don't want to take yours, Mayor.
No, no, I have another one.
If he doesn't want it, I'll take his.
I have two.
Oh, okay, perfect, alright. Mike, you can't send these things when I'm working until like five o'clock. I don't have a chance to look at them. I know, I'm teasing, it's okay, I'm happy that you do it, it's just I didn't get even a chance to open it up this afternoon. I opened it, I opened all the emails last night again, just to keep verifying, but then I'm like, oh, I missed one today.
Yeah, it's amazing what you've done.
Yeah.
Well, it just, I think there's a lot to to fill in on most of the family in the resort.
Yeah, did you guys go by the those triplexes?
Yeah.
I may be, I may be changing my mind. They're pretty long. Duplexes very often just look like almost a single man at home.
Yeah.
But those stretch down.
And and we've sort of, my recollection of when Adele and I won the commission, sort of had a kind of pitch up to promote between home.
Yeah.
Got that as a separate explanation. So single family between home and then maybe just three units enough, because that's what the assessors go.
We actually do two units enough, but well, it's, it's just who, who works them in the office and the commercial people just do it, because mostly a lot of that stuff could be done by income. They look at the income, not necessarily the sales on those, that's why, but I mean, but I think, I think three, you know. The triplexes are, I did look at those and I think you're right, I think they're more commercial than they are, or multifamily than they are, you know, single, single family residential.
Also Mike, I'm gonna bring up tonight, we're going to, um, did you say Judith Capuchin?
What was the, what was the general just?
Well, it was conservation measures and things like that. But one of them was an analysis of pools and water features.
That was, I think that was Lisa, was that Lisa Rutherford?
But one of the things that really caught my eye is that the movement of water makes a huge difference in how much evaporation there is. I think we have to take water fishers as, um, for every gallon, we can take two.
Two, okay, I, I.
It can actually double what pools are because the evaporation rate is double what.
Yeah, the movement's kind of, sure. Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
I think we need to be pretty aggressive where we can, right, you know, so, because, so I, I look at, um, Chuck A. for City of Dallas State. So I just present. So we were, me and the feldman, just sat down to. We did, this is about a hundred and sixty pounds of water, ten store. Most, I really believe in the state of Dallas, and most of them have grass, and most of them have, I think it's really only with the grass, the grass is the most. So it's not just.
The grass is the job.
So if everybody were to consume, or happen, what me and the feldman's consumed, they weren't, were long, but he, I thought of the feldman's. And I learned right at the same level, you know, so, so if everybody in the city is consuming, having a high consume, four, um, ten thousand people would only consume fourteen hundred eight pounds of water. We have twenty thousand.
Yeah. Well, it's true, I look at my water bills, my water bills are always pretty much the same, I mean, a little bit more, like three dollars a gallon when the grass has to be watered. I'm in the, I'm in the low eighties all the time, I make it three or four, and sometimes it gets to ten.
Yeah, yeah, but that's rare.
But it's rare, um, and I'm actually, you know, I don't, I don't have a lot of grass though.
Yeah.
I have three little patches, and I don't water them crazy, you know, but yeah. I don't know where it all, and I was looking at, at Chuck's kids report, and my subdivision hadn't had chance of getting some, to be more water than other subdivisions.
Your subdivision?
Yeah, and I don't know why, unless people have more water.
There could be some outliers there, and I may wanna, I'd like to go in and sort of scrub the data a bit, because he did it for like our, our subdivision.
He did, okay.
But he, like, put in a couple of, a couple of properties that weren't in our subdivision.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm wondering if he pulled Citadel too, for Citadel, regular Citadel into our subdivision, I don't know, because I was looking at it going, wow.
But I think it was scrubbing it.
There's no families in our subdivision practically, it's like, most houses have two people.
Yeah.
And so how much water could we be using?
So I think scrubbing the data a little bit, not for the whole city, but for a few subdivisions, so we can understand.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Hey Lance, how are you?
Tuesday and Thursday. For, uh, Monday, which night do you order then? Tuesday is at Firelake Park, Thursday is Eden Park, five to seven.
What is Thursday?
Thursday's the fourteenth.
I think fourteenth. What time?
Five, you can be there a few minutes early by fifteen.
Who's on the, who's on Tuesday?
I don't have anybody yet.
Okay, where do you call this, what do we call this?
Good evening, we welcome you to this regularly scheduled meeting, the Ivan City Council held this Thursday, April seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we'd like to recognize that we have, uh, four of our council members present, and the third is on the way from, or the fifth is on the way from Vegas, hopefully will arrive soon. So we do have a quorum and conduct the business on today's agenda. We're going to begin with a flag salute and invocation. We'll be led in that by, uh, council member, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this wonderful place we have to live and serve. And we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to be together this evening. As we discuss, uh, port matters, pray that we'll use good judgment and be have insight and, um, be enlightened into the things that we need to be doing for our city and for the future. We're grateful for those who serve here and help protect us and our public safety, those that give of their time and their talents to, uh, make this a wonderful place to be. We're grateful for those who are moving here, we pray that they'll feel welcome. And, uh, be able to take part in our community and the wonderful heritage that, and legacy that's been provided for us. Grateful for our country, we're grateful for our freedoms and those liberties we enjoy. We pray for peace throughout the world and throughout the land, and we offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. I'll now pull the ca, oh, here we go. Just in time, I'll now pull, pull the council to determine if there are any conflicts of interest that anyone has based on this evening's agenda, beginning with Councilmember Anderson.
None.
Thank you, Councilmember Murphy.
No conflicts.
Councilmember Johnson.
No conflicts.
Councilmember Mayor.
No conflicts.
Councilmember Scott.
No conflicts.
Thank you, and I have no conflicts. Um, we're going to begin with. One of our residents made us aware of something that is, um, I think, cool and reflects on Ivan City. So if you'd like to come forward. We, um, we found out through Kai Reed that, uh, the governor signed a declaration, um, designating this as Dark Sky Month. And, uh, because Kai was the one who discovered that, I asked her to come and read the declaration for us, so it can be on the public record.
Thank you, thanks.
So I am Kai Reed, and I'm on the board of Ivan's Night Sky. And the mission of our organization is to educate people on the value and the importance of protecting our night sky. So we were really excited when Governor Cox, for the second year in a row, declared April Dark Sky Month. So thank you for the opportunity of coming and reading this, I tried to pawn it off on Chris, or Mike, or somebody else, but nobody else took me up on it, so, but thanks, I appreciate that. So I'm gonna read you the declaration, because it really says a lot, um, in here about why it's important. So, whereas, more than eighty percent of residents in North America can no longer view the Milky Way from their home. Whereas, Utah is home to some of the darkest skies on earth and currently leads the world in dark sky preservation. With twenty-four accredited international dark sky places, including all of the mighty five national parks, ten state parks, and two towns. Whereas, visitors to Utah engaging in astrotourism tend to stay longer, spend more, and mitigate harmful tourism impacts on the local community. Whereas, astrotourism is intended, anticipated to generate nearly six billion dollars and support over a hundred and thirteen thousand new jobs in the American Southwest over the next decade. Whereas, stargazing, astronomy programs, star parties, dark sky photography, and many other activities allow Utah residents and visitors to enjoy the physical and emotional benefits of the night sky. Whereas, the implementation of dark sky practices in land use, construction, utilities, and other aspects of community life actively promotes local governance, reduces energy costs, and preserves Utah's western lifestyle. Whereas, dark skies are integral to the well-being of many animal and plant species and are demonstrated to have positive health impacts to human beings. And whereas, we wish to recognize the partnership of federal, state, and local agencies, as well as Utah's recreation, tourism, and education sectors, which make night sky opportunities in our state available for all. Now, therefore, I, Spencer J. Cox, Governor of the great state of Utah, hereby declare April twenty twenty-two as Utah Dark Sky Month. So I want to say thank you so much for what you have done as, as the city council, for your thoughtful consideration, uh, and deliberation as we went through the lighting ordinance review. I know that was not an easy thing for you to do, but I appreciate really the consideration that you had to protect our night skies. I think Ivan's is obviously a very special place, and we can still see the stars at night, and there are a lot of communities that can't. And so our hope is that we will continue to protect our night skies for generations, so that people, many, 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 many years down the road, will still look up and be able to see the stars in our night sky. So thank you, and thank you for getting me out, it's my grandson's birthday, and I left him, and he's waiting, because we have cake and ice cream planned, so.
You, you go ahead and leave.
Thank you very much.
I'll tell the governor you had a great ambassador here today. And just very briefly, council, I received a communication from Rocky Mountain Power thanking Ivan City for making a meaningful difference with their Blue Sky program. Um, and I think this, Chuck, is without some of their data being transmitted to them. I think there's a whole lot more than, than this is saying, because I think some of those, some of those interpreters or whatever are not getting, yeah, I, I'm getting emails saying there's zero production out of some of these, and which is not true, so. But anyway, they've, they've sent us a certificate, which I'll pass on down to Dale, that in two thousand twenty-one, um, our community saved forty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine pounds of carbon dioxide by supporting thirty-three thousand six hundred kilowatt hours of renewable energy, and, um, that's a cool thing. And now with our new array, twenty twenty-two, and is gonna look a whole lot more impressive. If you'd pass that down to Dale, thank you. Our first official agenda item is to receive an update on a memorandum of understanding regarding Black Desert Resort, so.
You.
That one's me, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, Dale just asked me to report on this. Uh, I think when we saw some citizens' comments, uh, those are upcoming, I think after the reports, uh, that were addressing this issue, we thought we'd just go ahead and give you an update, um, on what's going on there. So, and you might have received some complaints, we, we've been receiving some complaints on dust. We've had a windy spring, I don't know if you've noticed, but my gauge of a windy spring is if I have to go out in my backyard and pick up the cushions that have been thrown all over the place, a little bit much, and I've been having to do that a little bit much this spring, so. I think honestly it's been a windier than normal spring, and the dust has been, you know, when, when there's a lot of wind, there's, there's dust issues with construction sites, there just are. But, uh, last Monday, um, we had a significant wind event, and if you went outside, you probably saw dust throughout the whole valley. And, uh, certainly the construction sites were contributing their fair share on those days. Although I was looking out over the natural desert, looking out over Gunlock, where there aren't any construction sites, and saw plenty of dust out there too, so I don't know that we could have avoided dust on that day. But I do know that, uh, some of the residents that lived in the reserve probably got hammered, because the wind was blowing towards, from Black Desert Strait to their subdivision, and, and I do think, uh, in fact, Black Desert's acknowledged, and we've acknowledged, that they could have done a better job on that day of controlling dust, and they didn't do a great job. So we did kind of sit down with them and have a really serious conversation about how they might do a better job, and we came up with this memorandum of understanding, um, and it's the one that's on the screen there. And Dale, if you don't mind maybe scrolling down, these are just kind of wherashes of saying, hey, we know you're supposed to do this, and we know what the expectations are, that you meet all these requirements. But where we've kind of added maybe some additional monitoring and some additional controls is, uh, what we call these wind speed triggers. Um, and we're using sustained wind speeds rather than gust wind speeds, you know, I don't know what the better measure is, honestly. But, uh, we have suggested, and they've agreed, that starting when sustained wind speeds hit ten miles per hour, that we're gonna be watching the dust control issue very closely. that we're going to be watching the dust control issue very closely. And if, and it also, and you might notice in, in this language, it also says, hey, if this is in the forecast, we need to be on top of it before the wind gets here because, you know, you're much better off to be controlling dust before the wind arrives than when it's already arrived. So that's in this memorandum as well. But when winds hit 10 miles per hour, we've told them, hey, we're going to be monitoring some activities. If you're doing things that are throwing dust in the air, we may have to close some of those down. And then we have a secondary trigger when it hits 15 miles per hour, that there actually will be a pause of construction, and then we'll review together what activities might be able to continue in that sort of a wind environment. Anyway, that's kind of where we're at going forward. And you know, this is an MOU, a memorandum of understanding. They signed it. And, you know, they're not the only construction site in town, you know. Obviously, we're not just going to be worried about Black Desert when we're having wind speeds at these speeds. We might have a little bit extra concern because it is such a big site and it is so close to some of the residents. But that's, that's kind of our plan going forward. I think, I think we've done a pretty good job of meeting with them. And I think they've come forward and been pretty agreeable in saying, hey, we understand we can be part of a better solution here, and so I commend them for that. I will also say, just because I saw that as one of the, also one of the issues on the upcoming public hearing that, I can't remember what you call those, those customer, not customer, resident? Huh?
Town hall?
No, where the residents come in and have their say.
Request for future gen item.
Request for future gen item, yeah. Another item that came up was blasting. And I will say, you know, the fire department is in charge of the blasting permit. And our chief is actually here. I don't know if he wants to talk about that at all, but I did call over to Khan. I don't know if you knew that, Andy, that I spoke to Khan a little while ago, who, who had been put in charge of that permit. Khan assured me that the blasting contractor out there is qualified. He's licensed. He's, he's bonded up to $1 million. And, you know, from everything, all the information they have, that a very competent contractor knows what they are doing. I also did reach out to the developer. He actually sent me a report of the, from, from February 18th to April 6th of the moni- because they have to set up seismic stations that monitor the ground shaking from each blast. And they sent me data for that mon- those monitoring stations. So the number has to stay below .2 inches per second. And in the last two months, the highest value that came in on their seismic station was .12 inches per second. So they're just a little above 50% of the trigger value. So it looks like so far that they're in compliance. I haven't heard any actual, I haven't been given any evidence of actual damage caused by blasting. I just have heard reports of some window shaking and some concerns that it might cause damage, but I haven't actually heard a report of that. So anyway, that's my report. I have to answer any questions.
Counsel. Appreciate that, Chuck. Thank you so much. We'll go to our department reports, beginning with Parks and Recreation. Welcome, Benny Sorensen.
Thank you. You've probably got the report electronically. Just one thing I did want to mention is that we won two awards at the Utah Parks and Recreation Conference this year, one for Fire Lake Park as an outstanding facility, and also for the outstanding program for Bingo in the park, which is actually happening right now as we speak. Just, you know, something that started out as a.
We've been here.
You guys need to just cancel and go to Bingo. That's what you need to do. We'll be next week and you won't have Tuesdays and Thursdays, so next week you'll be there.
We'll be at the meeting.
You'll be there?
Oh, at the zoning meeting.
Okay. Tuesdays and Thursdays, so you're good to go.
Tuesdays, Wednesday, and Thursday.
He's taking your excuses away, buddy.
Then don't come, Lance. But, so it, you know, program that started out as just a social distancing program in people's cars and it just became really popular. There's 30 people sitting out there of all ages, older, younger, families, just, just enjoying the heck out of it. So it really is a good thing that Sarah has done. So we've got a lot of stuff coming up. We've got the yard sale, community yard sale be in this parking lot here Saturday morning. The first time we tried that. We'll see how it goes. We do have a number of places that don't allow those things. And there's CCNRs and there are HOAs. And we had 22 spots and all of them are filled with the seven, seven people on a waiting list. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. Should be exciting. Like I said, also hog and jog and the Easter egg hunt will be a week from Saturday. And I did, I did have a suggestion maybe to change that to Easter egg scramble. And so I thought, yeah, that kind of fits. Nobody's doing much hunting, but they are doing a lot of scrambling.
I like that.
So that was kind of fun. Sarah has got a concert in the park planned for May 13th, Friday, out here in the park. Another local, a couple of local bands who said they would like to give it a try and play. And T-ball is registering now. Ivan Soccer is going full speed. And in the cemetery, March was an unusual month. We had seven burials in March. I think that's the most we've had in a long, long time. But that's, I guess that's what we're there for. But otherwise, everybody's doing their thing, keeping things fixed up. We've done some overseeding. We did change out the, the paper towel dispensers at Fire Lake to to hand blowers. And it looks like it's already saving a lot of work for the staff and a lot of paper and trash and stuff, so most of it just goes in the dumpster and people can just dry their hands right there, so. Figured we'd give it a try and it seems to be working pretty well, so.
Hey Benny, a question. That front grass area, as you come into Fire Lake Park, it's really struggled to stay grass. What is the long-term?
Well, we just, we just re-sodded that with, with some Bermuda. This time, we're going to see how that goes. The soil there is, is pretty heavy clay and, you know, right there next to the sand, when the wind blows, it fills up with, with sand. We're going to see how that looks. It looks like it's doing pretty good right now, and we'll see if that holds up. It'd be nice to keep, keep the grass there because once it gets to a certain level of grit depth, then it should be fine because the, the water depth there is, is, you know, about that far when you say, Lance. Right there from the water that just wicks through the dam over there, so we may not even have to water it much out there. So we're hoping that that will work. But if not, it, it may end up concrete or something like that, so.
Is that, that other lawn area stays pretty green?
Yeah.
But it's, it's on imported soil, right? Is that the difference?
Yeah, well, there was imported soil in this area too. It's just a little bit different dynamic with the water that, that comes up and down right there, so. But we'll, we'll see how it goes and hopefully it'll take. With the Bermuda, it will spread a little more than the, than the other grasses would, so hopefully over the summer we'll see it doing that. And the geese don't seem to like it as much as they do the other types of grass, so. They don't eat it, they don't eat it as much, so.
It might be getting too much.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
It might be getting too much water because that water just comes right out the reservoir up into there.
Yeah, just, hopefully not.
Mayor, for the Easter egg scramble, is there a way we could do a time lapse video and see how quickly that disappears? Put it on the website?
We did one a few years ago. It was just.
It's in seconds. They're gone.
Yeah, it is. It's kind of like, I don't know if you watch the old Bugs Bunny cartoons where the sheep go across the meadow just eating all of the stuff. It's kind of how that works out. And it's gone. It's over.
I mean, a little drone shot would, would play well on YouTube, I guarantee it.
Convince, convince somebody to bring their drone out that knows how to do it.
Tom likes drones.
Any droners out there?
Tom.
Oh, that's right. We get Tom, Tom's, Tom's good at it, so.
We'll figure that out. Thank you very much, Benny. Going to public safety, Chief Parker, if you. Oh, and there's Bob there too. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So just wanted to update fire EMS on the public safety side. Going to kind of work through those organizational pillars that we talked about last month. So emergency response, we're running about, last month was 114 calls, which is about average for us, four to five calls per day. There were two significant incidents out on Highway 91, which I'm sure you all are aware of. Those were pretty tragic. But personnel responded, provided a cause of life extrication for one, and then we utilized a helicopter to fly another patient there, so. We did have our first brush call out past Shibwitz, ended without incident. We did have a structure fire off of North 100 East. That's under investigation currently. Was isolated to a bedroom and it's currently under investigation, so suspicious in nature. So that's kind of our, on our emergency response side, crews responding to calls, risk reduction. We do have the Great Shakeout, April 21st. We will be coordinating with police folks on that as well. There should be some informational flyers coming out as well, I believe, on the, on the city website, so. In cooperation with our responding agencies, Damaran Valley, where we've met myself with Chief Stoker on our east side with Saint George and Chief John Hennessy, just developing a plan, being cooperative, cohesive, so that we can all help each other. We call it Auto Aid, which currently does take place in our region. We use mutual aid, but we're working on possibly going to an Auto Aid agreement where we can help each other out, overlapping calls and especially during the wildland season, so. Additional risk reduction items, the restaurant over in Kienta, that was, there were some issues there, technical issues. B.C. Fuel, who does handle our inspections, resolved that issue with them and got their restaurant. It was down for a few days, but he worked as quickly as he could and on weekend to try to get that up and running again, so. We definitely do support business and growth, but we're trying to do it, obviously decode as safely as we can, so. Personnel development, we do have some individuals who are changing positions and roles. Engineer Youngbird will be our training officer. He's through UFR, which is our state certifying entities, our training officer certified through them. We do have Mr. Tobler, Captain Tobler will be leaving in May to go to PA school. So Engineer Taskchek will be taking his position as our EMS administrator. So there's quite a bit going on with our personnel and our staffing. Community affairs, we're working with several homeowner associations out in Kienta for a risk reduction plan for the fuels modification. We're met with Mr. Chuck Warren on multiple occasions and trying to come up with a plan for tamarisk removal, helping and assisting him with that, and hopefully through a grant, we can provide that assistance. Also with Councilmember Anderson, we took today to look out the water feature to provide the buffer on the, the west side of Kienta, so that was an interesting feature to me. I haven't seen that, wasn't aware of. The, it's a pretty large capacity water system to provide a buffer, so that was new to me, but it was great to go out there and walk that today. We did have some events at Tuacan, the PBR event. We do staff. Anytime there's an event per state EMS bureau, we have to have EMS personnel there with an ambulance. And so we did provide EMS services over at PBR. We had a couple of riders were injured and taken to the hospital, unfortunately, so. But we have the Ironman coming up in May. We're prepping for that as well, so. And then I'll just hopefully finish up as quickly as possible. The station maintenance, we do have rigs going out. We're working with, obviously, Ivan City mechanic that's going to begin this week coming up to try to get our light vehicles maintained, so we're excited about that. It does help us out on certain vehicles that the city of Ivan owns, so. Other than, than that, we do have some financial support that we're working through, budget combination, and again, obviously through the city of Santa Clara, but it does help us to be more efficient with our budget, trying to combine both fire and EMS as all-risk providers, so. That is it. Does anybody have further questioning?
Counsel. Thank you very much, Chief.
Fire chief's going to make me step up my game on these reports. Thanks a lot. Counsel, you have our, our report. I'd just like to point out a couple of things. First, I want to compliment the fire on that thing on, on 91. It was horrific, but I was amazed at how well they worked with live flight and how well they coordinated that awful, awful thing. It was a nightmare, but they just did wonderfully well. The equipment, everything paid off, and it was just an amazing thing. We do have a drone, by the way. If we want to do Easter, just let, we have a pilot too.
You're on.
Okay. He'll be there. I'm not sure. But we did an interesting enforcement action in our crosswalks. Drivers, I don't think they understand crosswalks anymore, what's required, when to stop and how to stop, so. We received some state money to do a special enforcement. We noticed a problem. And we had a briefing one morning and we went out one morning and one afternoon. And we made 49 stops, wrote 49 citations for people where the, the folks were actually in the crosswalk when they went through. We didn't do any borderline stuff. We didn't do anything that would create any kind of like question about the enforcement. There's a lot of confusion about roundabouts, and we're going to have to probably put out a, an educational thing, our newsletter and a few things. We're looking at doing some stuff on our website. It was pretty amazing, and it was a lot of rude driving. And we didn't issue many warnings. Actually, we issued none. If you were pedestrians there, you wrote a citation, but it depends on how it's painted and where it's located. So we're going to do some work there. We have a real problem with the roundabouts, especially the one down here and our, and the one with our new business center there, so we'll be working on that. If, and when you read the report, I don't know if you noticed, we did, we've done a lot of things lately involving funding, federal funding. We've been living and dying by that, frankly. They've probably paid for half of our gear over the last four or five years. And, and one of the reasons why we continue to get money is when you take money from the government, they, they expect a response. If you're going to take the DUI money, you need to be out there. You need to be making, be making arrests. And we've been very, very successful with that, but we're finding it's very time consuming. You make one, one arrest and then envision you're gone for four hours from the arrest to transportation to your report. Sometimes you have to go to the hospital. If you notice, I made five DUIs and 11 drug arrests just in the month on those things, and that took almost 80 hours just doing that, so. We, we're grateful for the money and it's been very, very successful for us. We've also, just one comment I want to make about our code enforcement, that's been very successful. Sergeant Briggs, if you, if you read the report, he talks about closing the cases. These are successful things where people have made improvement. And I don't know if you've received any, but I've only received one complaint about inaction, but we thought the complaint was a little harsh on their neighbor, and we don't think the neighbor was doing anything, but he's closing out cases like crazy and we're getting a great response. And when you knock on a door and you say, listen, this is the issue, people have been very responsive. We haven't had anybody get upset with us. They understood the issue from things like batteries in your driveway to certain things, and, and I know he's worked with fire a little bit on some of those. We do have a new kid, a new young man graduating from the academy on Friday, so he'll be in our department doing very well, so. Anyway, just, just a few notes there, so. If you have any questions, I'll step away.
Counsel.
Mayor, I do have.
Please. Councilmember Mayor.
Chief, were you implying about, when you're talking about federal funding and, and then the, the work required to provide it, were you trying to make a point with that in the sense of maybe we, we want to think carefully about the kind of funding we accept in the future? What were you saying?
Well, I want to first of all acknowledge the granting and the funding and the fact that we're able to get it and the great work that we do. Another issue is I, and, and the city manager, Kulam, and I have talked a lot about equipment in the future. We're looking at some major purchases that may not be federally funded, for instance, our radars, our radios, our tasers. Those are things we've been really fortunate in having. And plus, a lot of the overtime that we've been using has been on the, the federal thing. So just a couple of things. We're grateful for it. We work well with it. We've been working hard on the grants. But I worry about the times in the next few years. We're going to have some equipment demands and I just don't want to just surprise you with it and say, hey, we need all this, but it's coming.
Okay.
So, great question. Thank you.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
You do a great job on everything, but you talked about the.
You do a great job on everything, but you talked about the code enforcement and I'd just like to sort of piggyback on that. Sergeant Briggs, uh, last month sent me a breakdown of the incidents in January and February. So I think when you add in March, it's over thirty incidents this year that he's dealt with successfully. And he broke them down by category. I think that there's a perception among some or a lot of people in the city that were pretty lax on code enforcement. And I think maybe in the past, maybe we had some lapses there, but it's been very strong this year and I think just stressing it in these monthly reports is terrific, so thank you very much for doing that.
Sure, sure, and we're, we're leaning forward, I think, you know, we've, I don't know what the answer's been historically, but I know that we're on it now and, and everybody that, uh, sends in a complaint, they get a personal call or a visit and a follow-up, so they're very aware of what we're doing, we don't ignore anything, uh, and we take action where we legally can. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
We'll jump to our, uh, planning commission report, I see now chairman. Good to see you.
Good to see you guys, Mayor and Counsel. Um, so yes, so on that, we, uh, swore in our new commissioner, Derek Larson, this week. Um, so he'll be a great addition to our commission, now we're full again. And along those same lines, they now wrangled me and now I'm the chairman and, um, we have, uh, um, excuse me.
Doug.
I just lost it.
Doug.
Clifford, thank you, there we go, that's the vice chair, wow, it just, whoosh, apologize. Um, is the new vice chair for us. Um, as this week's, um, went on, we had, um, a public hearing on, uh, a conditional use permit for, uh, the Black Desert Resort. This is basically their temporary use for the new golf course and that kind of thing. And, um, the only real hangup, I think, any of them, any of us in commission had was enough parking for what was there. The parking was set up for the structures that were there, not necessarily how many parking was going to be needed for the actual golf course itself. So we, uh, we ended up approving it with the fact that they would double the parking up front and then we also put some provisions in there so that as they reach seventy-five percent of that parking, they have to increase it again so that we're never, you know, people getting in and out, not having a problem with parking in there. Um, so we did approve that with those few changes. Um, and then we had, uh, uh, we went through the table of uses again and Dale come up with some, uh, I think the final is what we came up with on that and we recommended that for approval. I think, I don't know if that comes through tonight or not for you guys. And then, um, on the zoning map, we had a small discussion on that and what's going on with that now? And I think, uh, it's already been discussed with you guys, but on, uh, the twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth, that's next Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, we will be starting our open houses with that. And so we will have two, um, commission members and two council members there, each one of those nights to help. So as city people come, they can discuss and see what their input is on that. Um, the twelfth will be at Fire Lake Park, the thirteenth will be at the City Park here and the fourteenth will be at Unity Park. And so that'll be coming up this next week and I'm sure he's already wrangled a few of you into being there on those nights, so. And, um, I think that was about it for this week.
Thank you, David, congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad to have you serving here, any, any questions or comments, Counsel? Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I have, I have three, uh, citizen requests for future agenda item forms before me. I'm going to take a moment and, um, point out, this is actually not intended to, uh, serve as a channel for administrative, uh, functions. It's intended to deal with the need for the council to, um, address something in an ordinance or a policy or something like that. And the nature of these three, uh, these three forms, one had to do with dust, one had to do, uh, with blasting. And I think the answer to your questions have been already provided here. The third one from, uh, Myrna Olson had to do with potential traffic congestion at the new entrance to the temporary golf course. And Chuck is right here, so, um, I'm going to let him, um, give us a comment or two on, on the traffic study that, and how the roundabout is intended to work there and whatever else you'd like to suggest. Were they sitting in your office with you asking this question?
Okay, you want to address that now?
If, yes, I think so.
Uh, yeah, sure. So, uh, the, uh, the golf course obviously is a temporary function. Um, anytime that a use, uh, doesn't generate, well, let me just back up. Uh, so we have a traffic study that's required as part of the development. And the traffic study looks at the whole project, doesn't look at just the golf course. Uh, and basically, uh, that traffic study shows that, uh, we really don't have to do much more to the project site except for provide the roundabout and provide those entrances. Now, the, uh, but that's after everything is built out. Um, regarding just the golf use itself, um, a, a use has to generate, uh, more than a hundred trips in a peak hour for us to have, require maybe a specific study to look at that one use itself. And, uh, I don't see the golf course generating a hundred trips in the peak hour. And so we wouldn't require them to kind of dial in on this, uh, this conditional use to temporarily put the, uh, the golf entrance right there. And so in this case, um, uh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't require anything of the developer. Uh, we don't see any reason why it shouldn't be able to handle the traffic load that's going to be generated there. Um, and, uh, that's probably the best response I can really give to that, that question.
This is obviously something that can be monitored. Um, the, the question is a little bit speculative, it's a concern that in the future, when, when that golf course is in use, that there's going to be a problem. And I think that the, the city will certainly respond to it if there, if, if one appears.
Yeah, and I think the parking area doesn't even hold a hundred cars, I mean, there's just, there's no chance that it's going to generate that sort of traffic.
So, but thank you for the comments, uh, hope you appreciate the clarification I just made and I hope that answered your question. And anytime that any of our residents wish to have, that wish to address something like this that is administrative in nature, we have got an extremely helpful, willing staff. And you're welcome to come in at any time or email and I assure you, you'll get an answer. Uh, the emails that come to me that are of this nature, I typically forward on to the appropriate staff person, uh, to respond to. That's very often Mike, very often Chuck, uh, because they're the ones better qualified to give you an answer to your concern than we really are even here as, as your, your city council. So, thank you. All right, um, we have no public hearing items this evening, so we're going to move to item five A on the agenda. Council will continue its discussion regarding ordinances adopting and implementing regulations for landscape, landscaping and water conservation for developing land in Ivan City. And, uh, we had a work meeting recently and went as far as we could go and didn't get to the end, so we're going to basically resume where that work meeting left off. Uh, once again, thanks to, uh, Councilmember Scott, who has done, um, a yeoman's job of providing, uh, language for us to, to consider as we go through and continue this discussion. And Councilmember Scott, um, as, as the council decided that we would be wise to include two new, um, two new chapters in the ordinance, one, one being mult, for multifamily and one being for resorts. Uh, you graciously, uh, gave us a draft of both of those, can see the hours of work, uh, that's gone, gone into this. And so, um, it, it strikes me that we ought to just continue from where we left off, but you've got a number of, of redlined, um, inserts in what we did earlier. Is it your preference that we, do we skim over those or get to the end of, of the, of these chapters and then go back and, and consider?
Okay, uh, Mayor, um, I, I'd like to continue where we left off. What I had done in the, in the, over the last week or two is I took all of our decisions from the work meeting and I put them into the Conservancy District's draft ordinance, sort of as the beginning of our ordinance, uh, to, to work with. Then when I read the minutes, uh, from that work meeting today, I realized that I missed a couple of things. So I'll have a few things to add to that. And so my suggestion would be we just continue where we left off at the last meeting. Hopefully we get through the whole ordinance, uh, today and then I'll update that Conservancy District version with our decisions from today, plus the things that I forgot from the last meeting. And then we'll have that to work with at the next meeting. And I don't know if we'll get to the, uh, chapter on resorts or the chapter on multifamily, we might, but just so that you know, that, uh, those chapters are just basically a shell for us to work with. Uh, I, I really just took, for the most part, the language that was already in the draft ordinance from the Conservancy District or the changes that we made and just applied them to both of those sections. So I think we have a little more heavy lifting to do on those, but we'll see what we get to. So do you want to start with?
Well, we ended, we ended at four point two.
That's correct.
And, um, the, the way we were going at this council, uh, for the public's information, was we were basically going through, um, sort of line by line and then referring to the information that Mike, uh, put together, comparing the district ordinance with, uh, with the Santa Clara version and other comments that came, um, as Saint George City has contemplated this as well. So we, we kind of bounce around, I'll, I'll, I'll move into a section and then we'll jump to Mike and, and, uh, have him, uh, read those comments and we'll discuss that. So, section four point two, uh, has to do with the new development in all non-residential zones and non-residential development in, in any zone. Uh, that shall meet the landscape, landscape design standards and irrigation design standards of this ordinance. So four point two, number one, is that, so basically this is non, not, we're dealing in the non-residential arena here now. Right. That grass is not permitted outside of an active recreation area and, um, prohibited in park strips. When we get, when we get this discussion on park strips, I, I'm not sure that there, that we're in this community looking for grass in any park strip regardless of the width and we do have some defining numbers in there. I believe eight feet shows up a couple of times as, as the width and I don't know if it's ten feet, do, is that, uh, is that okay for grass? Yeah, I, I.
I don't think we need any.
We, we don't do that currently, we have, e- even our wider, um, landscape buffers eh, along our, our major collectors and so forth, don't have grass in any of those park strips. So we probably ought to address the language on that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think we used the word lawn, right, instead of grass? Didn't we change that last time or something?
We're using grass.
Grass? Cause there's gra, I was, had this conversation with just someone the other day and it's, there's grasses that you plant that are not, so just for clarification, we want to make sure, cause there's desert grasses that you plant. And I want people. They're being very low.
That could be a definition issue, that when we say grass, we're not talking about, um, well, certainly not. Certainly not synthetic turf, but, but, um, drought tolerant types of, of grasses.
We have a definition for artificial, so the grass is the real living product. And so are you saying that we want to define what type of grass, as it's like Bermuda versus fescue?
No, just, just the definition of, when some people read the word grass, that means there's plants out there that are, we call them grasses, you know, um, I can't think of any of the words today, but they're plants, not, uh, what do you want to call it?
Not lawn.
Not lawn, yeah, lawn, there's our word, though, so. Anyway, just, it's probably not that big of a difference.
So the, the definition, that's a good point, the definition for grass is a surface layer of earth containing mowed grass with its roots.
Mowed grass.
Maybe, maybe mowed grass is the key.
Yeah, okay.
Cause the other types of grasses generally aren't.
Yep, that'll work.
Okay, we're okay. And then Mike, in that, in that first, uh, sentence there on number one, we've, we've dropped down to ten percent, so that fifteen would, would automatically follow suit, right?
Yes.
So you'll stop me when we get to a line where you have a, you have a, a variation, okay? And number two, it has to do with, um, that land, landscape and irrigation installers shall follow the plan, uh, plans that have been signed and approved by the city. That's automatic, I think, right? Okay, number three, each project shall propose and follow an approved planting plan that has, has a minimum of forty percent vegetative cover of a landscaped area with water efficient shade trees and bushes, adequate in number and configuration to visually enhance the project, prevent heat islands and prevent soil erosion. The configuration of the vegetation in the planting plan is the sole, is in the sole discretion of the city. Got a question mark by this.
I don't agree with that.
Sole discretion of the developer. How they arrange it.
So Mike, was this, was this solely district language?
Uh, this is district language and, uh, Saint George and their comments, uh, they made a note that, uh, the sole discretion of the city sort of introduces a new cost and personnel burden for the city. And they didn't come to a conclusion on that, but that's something that, in all of this, we need to look at. Is it, is this something that is doable and practical?
Yes.
And enforceable?
And I don't see that being the case here.
Right.
Mike is not going to hire, um, a botanist to review plans, I don't think. And once a plan is submitted, it, it's ultimately inspected. I, I just don't see where the, where the city enters in in dictating what those plants are going to be if there's a, an approved list that has to be complied with. Is that, am I reading this right? Cause I, I've had some confusion about this whole paragraph here.
Mayor?
Yes.
I mean, there's two things here, where does the forty percent come from?
Once again, district language, right?
Correct.
And, and am I, so once again, this, this is confusing to me, so.
I mean.
We're saying if we ha, if we have a landscape area, forty percent of it has to be vegetated.
With trees or drought tolerant plants of some kind.
That's what this is saying, yes.
Do we agree with that?
Well, and so I guess the question is, are you talking about the trunk of the tree as being a, a portion of that forty percent? Or are you talking about the spread of the branches being the forty percent?
Mayor?
Uh, and the same with any kind of plant, you know, that grows like an upside down pyramid, right? What, how are you measuring forty percent? That, that's problematic.
Yeah. Mayor, I, we had, we did a project in Salt Lake and they required a, a plan. And I'm, I'm going to tell you, do we, do we need a la, I mean, we're reliant, especially when it says sole discretion of the city. I don't want to, I mean, everyone, we have a different philosophy. It's, that's like Mike says, he's going to have to hire someone, you know, that's a landscape artist or.
Yeah, Mike. So, so I have done planner view in California and yes, they do planner view on.
Yeah.
Where the water lands, off the roof, where, everything else, so it can get complex.
Yeah.
If we choose to make it complex, where you'd have to hire somebody to do that additional work. But I, I think, um, we, we should take baby steps with this and first, let contractors know this is what's required and then maybe after a while, if they're not complying, then we'd have to look at maybe saying, okay, we're doing a planner view now on your landscaping before it's, it's installed. And like I said, that's a California thing and I'm not sure if it always translates to Utah, but there, there are some jurisdictions who do that.
So you heard Mike say, one of the criteria for our review of this is that it's, it's practical, that it can be enforced. We've already nixed a couple of things that just really practically speaking, aren't enforceable. For example, the eight percent, easy to, easy to analyze and, and approve, you know, it's either, it either conforms or doesn't. But then some of the other things that are, that are, that would be far harder to, to.
Yeah, it's been fifteen years since I looked at gallons per minute on showerheads, you know, originally.
Who's going to go do that? That's, that was one of them, right, Mike?
Yeah.
We, we just went to a.
Yeah, so you have to have the box.
Many square feet, it needs the pump, this many, under that, it does not.
Yeah, so you'd have to have the box, the fixture came on your final inspection to make. to make sure that actually complies, because you're not going to see the listing on the showerhead itself. So you're going to have to go back and then do the research on that.
I think we got to do it, Mike's... We got to... Do we have a problem right now? So what can we do to make this very... Just to start the process? Because I've found that if you ask me for a landscape plan, I've found, for instance, in Indigo, I'm overplanting, and I'm finding that in the... As time goes on, one plant takes out another plant if you overplant. And so you just got to... There's... For us to make those decisions, I mean, he's... Mr. Pell's a landscaper, you know, and people like that that do this stuff every day and knows, understands the plants a lot better than us up here. But so I don't want to... I guess I'm not... I probably know more about it than most of you, but and I'm not consider myself educated enough to make 40% make sense or not, you know.
So herefore, we don't require a landscape plan. And this consistently calls for one. Well, certainly, now, commercial is a little different. I think most cities probably do require a landscape plan on commercial development, right? We do, don't we?
Yeah, to some extent, yeah. We... They do have a landscaping page to their plans as part of the package. And Benny does work with them on the list of permitted plants and just verifies that, you know, what they're planting works. And I think he has Joseph kind of review those with him, because Joseph has quite a bit of expertise in that area, too. So they actually required on a commercial development to submit a landscaping plan.
We don't require it on residential.
Not on residential.
Highway 91.
Even on commercial, if it's as complex as what this is calling out. But the 40%, where the district was coming from is is they pointed to a city in Arizona that was... Basically, they required zero scape. And so there was no landscaping anywhere. And it drove the temperatures very high. And it was very unsightly. And so what they're trying to do is say, no, you landscape a certain amount of your yard. And for... This is for commercial, and so they're saying for your commercial development, you provide some landscaping, offer some relief for the eye as well as a little bit of cooling of the temperatures. We don't want to be like that city in Arizona. And so I think that's kind of where they're coming from.
So we could go with the fact that the district did a lot of research on this, and that's their recommendation, and just go with the recommendation. I'd be inclined to do that, other than this last part, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not reading that number three that way. I'm reading it that it says that a planting plan is only required if they have over 40% vegetative cover. And it's not requiring 40%. It's just saying that if you have over 40%, then you need the planting plan. Is... Am I not reading that right?
That's not how I read it.
Is that not what that's saying?
It says each project shall propose and follow an approved planning plan that has a minimum of 40% vegetative cover.
Right, it's saying that if they have the minimum of 40% vegetative cover, then an approved planting plan is required. No?
No, it says each project shall propose and follow an approved...
Yeah, I think...
That has a minimum. It needs to have a minimum.
I think Lance is right. I think they're saying that they're requiring the 40%.
And that might be the right number.
Doesn't sound that way.
Yeah, that's how I read it. But that might be the right number, too. I don't, you know, I don't know that answer. But and I agree, we don't want to have... We want to have enough to cover the ground, keep the dust down, keep the temperatures down, all that good stuff.
Mayor? So to me, the problem with the 40% is, so again, you know, what are you measuring, the trunk or the spread of a tree? Are you measuring a new, young plant or a mature plant? If you don't have a requirement of 40% or whatever, if you just say, we want a plan that has landscaping, then it becomes very subjective. And so one person on staff one day may say, oh, this looks good to me. Another person on a different day may say, this just doesn't look good to me.
Mike could do that anyway.
So subjective's problematic, too, because it eliminates certainty, creates uncertainty for the applicant and for the community. But how do you measure the 40%?
Well, going the direction you're just suggesting here, that you could replace minimum of 40% with some vegetative cover to get away from what Dale was talking about.
Well, that could be one plant.
Yeah, that could be just one thing in the corner.
What you see out that window is all that we plant around this city hall.
That doesn't meet the requirement already.
Well, if you say some instead of 40%...
Yeah, no, I meant the 40% doesn't.
I mean, I'm not sure 40% is the wrong number, but you're all bringing up good points about what is that?
Mayor, I just, when you're talking about the trunk of the tree or the spread, I would assume that 40% to me means what's coming out of the ground. Right? I mean, that's how I would look at it. I would look at what's in the air. It's what's coming out of the ground, because we're trying to do vegetative cover of the ground. I'm thinking, I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it. So I don't know that it matters if the plant comes out at the top, like the tree.
But when you plant the other plants, that tree will kill off the other plants because of the shade. And so it's kind of ridiculous to go plant plants underneath the tree.
Underneath the tree, that's true.
And one tree, that trunk consumes two square feet, will produce a lot more shade and protection from heat islands than more square footage of ground cover.
Yeah.
Potentially, so...
I know, and I'm planting, I overplant, and then when it grows three years later, it's pretty wild.
There's no question. These things quadruple in size, quintuped, whatever. I mean, that one that Dale pointed to is going to get 10 times that big.
Do we... Mayor, do we dare ask a landscape gentleman that's in the audience what his thoughts are?
Yeah, if we get there.
Okay. So why don't we put a question mark by that and then come back to it? And then we... So we keep moving. And then just take off that bottom, you know, at the discretion of the city.
Mayor, I guess the other approach would be, we've talked before on, I forget which issue from the last meeting, but the idea that Jenny reminded us at the last meeting is we should be reviewing this again within six months anyway. So we put something in here now, it gives us time to figure out, is it really workable? Do we have to modify it? How do we modify it? Ideally, we're going to have something that we believe is workable right now. But we do have this six-month window to give us a chance to do a little more thinking and observing about some of these problematic ones.
I'm thinking about in my mind where there's a non-residential project that would be built in six months to look at.
So I'm going to throw something out here that if you were to regard vegetative cover as simply the area of the plant itself, yeah, so you've got, what, two square feet, two square feet? And that really isn't how it comes across in an actual landscape. I dare say that if you use that definition, 40%, you'd have to have plants everywhere, and that isn't conservation. Some of the beautiful landscapes around that are more zero scape or whatever, I'll bet if you actually are calculating the square footage of the plants themselves, I bet that might be as low as 20, 15 or 20%. But the presence of the plant, it's more than just the plant itself. It's sort of, you've got a little island of green. And so I wonder if the intent isn't that an area that has plants in it is regarded as a planting area, whether they're sparse or close together, and an area that is all gravel and boulders and whatever is non-vegetated. So you'd look at that area there and say, okay, that's vegetated.
Some will disagree.
Well...
Mayor, so you're saying the total square footage, including where there aren't plants here, that's your vegetated area?
I'm just saying, if you were to take the purest definition of this and literally go by the square feet of plants themselves, 40% would be a zillion plants on an average lot.
Yeah, I see that.
Mr. Mayor?
Help us.
I read vegetative cover, and I think of the landscape plans that I've seen. I think it's defining a canopy or the size of the bush. Not what's in the ground, but what its actual size would be as a landscaped item. So in other words, on a landscape plan, it's going to have a circle with a diameter much larger than a plant.
Of the mature plant.
Right.
Typically.
Yeah, so we're talking about a landscape plan and vegetative cover. I interpret that to mean the canopy of the plant or the size of the mature plant, rather than going right down to where the plant enters the ground. If you got a bush that is six feet in diameter or will be, and it comes down to a small little area that goes right into the ground, I think you're looking at the six-foot space. And then, because you don't want, in your plan, you don't want to plant something too close to the base of that plant, or it won't live, as Lance has said.
Yeah.
And so then you're requiring, you know, much more of that area to be covered, and you're over-landscaping it. And I don't think that's what you're reviewing on a landscape plan.
Yeah, so if y'all know what he's talking about, when a landscaper does a plan, they literally have blocks that show this type of tree, and it's, yeah, it's these little squiggly circles, right? And if we use that and somehow are able to define that as we're talking about the mature plant, still, I think if you went and looked at some of the even more lush-looking zero-scape landscapes, there's nowhere near 40% coverage there. So maybe that number needs to be half that. But I think 40% is out of line. And we need to clarify, like Dale has pointed out here, that we're talking about the mature plant as it would be...
So Mayor? So go ahead.
Well, I was going to make a couple of observations, if I may.
Please.
And in the detail of the discussion that you're all having, you know, the object or the outcome of the the noun and the action verb is to... The cause and the effect is to visually enhance the project to prevent heat islands and prevent soil erosion. That's the purpose of this statement as it's written. So, you know, that's what they're trying to accomplish, is to enhance the beauty, prevent a heat island and prevent soil erosion. So you could argue both ways, right? A tree with the roots in the ground is going to help prevent soil erosion. But backing away from all that, I just want to make a couple of observations. Number one, I think we are a case study in why government takes a long time to do things and make decisions, because we are getting bogged down on one little item here. We, you know, so that's one thing, just for fun. And the other thing is, we have about five more people here in attendance than we do for our budget-type meetings. And if we continue at this pace, I think we may have negative people here. So I know this is important, but I think if we can't figure it out, something, item, let's just hit it, mark it as two, you know, we'll come back to it, and let's keep moving through.
Mayor, so are you saying that these people are not, like, so excited about all this?
I think we're going to lose them.
I'm trying to look for smiles or something. No, I'm kidding.
They're good sports. So, but you do make a good point, Dennis, about... The point of all this is... To provide, yes, uh-huh. So maybe a verb like sufficient? Or it's not a verb, but...
Mayor? So, forget about the 40% for a moment. Following on what Dale was suggesting, so how about at the end of that first sentence, an approved planning plan that has a minimum of 40% vegetative cover based on the canopy of the vegetation at maturity? And now the question is, are we going to say sufficient vegetative cover? 20% vegetative cover? Let's maybe to Dennis's point, for now, we're marking up the Conservancy District's ordinance with our changes, but we're still going to be reviewing those changes. We're not making any final decisions tonight. So if you like that language, if Dale likes that language, based on the canopy of the vegetation at maturity, then are we using 40% or are we going to be subjective and just say sufficient?
Well, sufficient, I mean, sufficient is too subjective, let's face it. But this is an interesting paragraph, because it is in opposition to the whole point of the ordinance. When you say a minimum of a percentage of vegetative landscape, well, that's water use.
Well, the other object here is, the other point this statement's trying to make is that the things you choose are water-efficient shade trees and bushes. So I don't know. I don't think we need to get hung up with 40% and all that. I think we just need to say, an approved planning plan that has that has landscaped area ought to have, or shall have, water-efficient shade trees and bushes adequate to accomplish these objectives.
And you'll have to define vegetative cover.
Well, have we defined vegetative cover?
No, we haven't.
But the potential definition is vegetative cover based on the canopy of the vegetation at maturity.
So maturity, one thing, sorry, Mayor, maturity is too subjective, too, because it depends how much you've watered it, how much sunlight it gets or doesn't get. You know, you can have a desert willow that thrives because you've pruned it properly, and then you have others, it just chokes itself and it stays small, so...
But there is a standard, actually, in that industry that projects what the size, height, and canopy is going to be. So if it's based, Mike, on a standard, where did our landscaper go? Oh, he bailed?
I told you, they don't want to listen.
If the language suggested that it was based on a landscaping standard... Yeah, landscaping standard. And if we're calling for a minimum, just since we are going to review this and we need to move on, what if we drop that to a minimum of 20%? Because the point is, they don't want to have, they don't want to have the situation that happened in, I think it's...
Tucson.
Tucson. Who's now going back and planting trees and all kinds of other vegetation to try and get rid of their problem.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you, 40%, if we're talking about actual canopies, is a lot of plants.
So Mayor, minimum of 20% vegetative cover based on landscaping standards?
Yes.
At maturity.
And those standards, they have a range depending on the area they're in. If you go read landscape books, there's a whole... But no, what I'm getting at is, I think we're okay, though, because it tells us for our area, okay? There's trees, I've sat in many meetings about these landscaping standards. They... There's so... Anything that's creative is subjective. And so if we want to put it in a box, we lose our creativity.
So there is a book that defines this, and we probably ought to just look up what that book is or ask our friend who's in here.
I think if we put it in here, Dale has, if it ever became an issue, we can change... If, right now, if Mike comes to us and goes, hey, we're having a problem with this, define what this means. Then we put it on the agenda and we change it. Right now, we don't have an issue with it, let's move on and see.
And then take out the last sentence?
Yes.
That gives the city sole discretion?
Yeah, we never want to give the city sole discretion.
Well, it says it's approved already, too, so...
Yeah.
Approved, so it's like redundant. It's like redundant.
Don't even know what the city's doing there. Ah, Dennis, you're right.
That sounds like a declaration instead of a city.
Screaming on. But, Mike, if, just as a parentheses here, if we can identify that, where, what that standard is listed in, we could put that in and that, this discussion would be over.
Yeah, only thing I'd tell you, I've had people bring me five, six different books with different standards in it, so I'd.
That's why we oughta just name a book, so.
Yeah, but they, they're hard to, different plans.
We'll get with Joseph and ask him which one to use. Number four, if secondary irrigation water is available, each project shall connect to the system. No, no concerns about this, are there?
If available.
Once again, that second sentence, though, a city may make minor exceptions, allowing use of.
Wait, wait, yeah. Mr. Mayor, this was put in because there are some buildings, they mentioned Sky West, also LDS temples, that have certain planting areas with delicate flowers. Sky West may have some from other countries, at least that's what they mentioned. And so it, it wouldn't be able to handle the mineral content, or, you know, some of the stuff that's in irrigation water, and so it requires the use of culinary water to landscape those specially planted areas, and that's why that sentence is in there.
Makes sense.
Mayor?
Okay, yes.
But why, could we call it something other than, what is a small beautification area? Why don't we just say in here, you know, it's for delicate plant, you know what I'm saying? Like, just say like what you just said, plants that can't handle, you know, irrigation water. I don't understand what small beautification area means, but anyways.
Mayor? When I, when I read that, it meant that maybe there's a small place in the inside of a courtyard where we can't get the irrigation to, so that's what I read, and it.
That'd be the other side of it, huh?
That allow you to, because you got a little valve there, and you just run it there instead of trying to get around a building to get irrigate, secondary water to it. That's what I believed it meant, and plus your interpretation, or the, whoever told you that.
That's one we can come back to in six months. Sort of makes sense, though, doesn't it? All right, documentation, this is kinda technical. Any concerns about any of these requirements? Mike, are these pretty standard? You know what section I'm talking about?
I scroll down and see if I.
Required, required documentation, so this is really your camp.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just as an aside, from, we're, we're at line two eighty-three. From line two eighty-three to three eighty-three, neither Santa Clara nor St. George had any changes.
Yeah, in professional art, landscape architect, I don't know if every residential house is gonna have like the cookie cutter one?
Now, this is, this is not residential.
Oh, this is commercial, okay, yeah. Yeah, they, they should already have one on a retainer then for commercial and to, to do that type of a plan, yeah.
All this stuff is standard on, on a landscape architect's plan anyway, and that's who does commercial plans.
Yes, yeah.
I will say, we've never used one in.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. So Mayor?
Yes.
To Lance's point, I was thinking the same thing. Do, do we need to require a professional? In other words, if, if an amateur can come up with the same out, the thing, the requirements are met, the other parts of this standard, what, why do we sort of protect a, an industry of professional landscape architects?
Good point.
Doppel has rules for architecture, and I believe you have to be professionally licensed on a commercial project. So just like architects have a stamp, they have their own stamp for design.
Yeah, well, I don't think you have to use them.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
But, but state statute will say when they can do it, and when, when a different professional can stamp those type of plans. So it's already addressed who can do it and who can, cannot do it.
So a structural plan that comes in has to have a structural engineer's stamp.
All right, what, I'm sorry, Mayor, what, let, let me just think of the example. So say I'm the icebox, and I build the icebox, and I look around, and I saw the city's got a, what are, hey Dale, what are those plants you're planting? And I say, oh, those look good, and you put them in, and why isn't that okay?
Well, there's a design and state law will dictate who can do it, who, who cannot do it. So if you're requiring something, but state law will, will exactly say when it has to be licensed and when they don't have to be licensed already.
So let's do this, let's leave this alone and find out if the state law requires it, because I've never heard of a state law requiring for landscape architects, it's more cities that have required it.
The architectural plans that I've seen commercial have a separate landscape stamp on them.
They do, because the cities require it.
We're, we're talking about the professional landscape architect, PLA.
So. All, all of the references to architects could, could just be changed to landscape designer, and that could be an individual, a semi-pro, or an architect?
Or just simply designed as per state law? Then whoever is allowed to do it as per Doppel regulations can do it.
Would that vary depending on the size of the project?
Yes, yeah.
Example you gave is the small scale, then we're looking at something like, like black desert.
Which, which of course they're gonna hire someone, because they want them to do it right and make it good, but here this is saying, all business, you shall hire a professional.
Mayor?
I don't know.
So on this, Dennis's point, so if we say, instead of landscape architect, we just change that to landscape designer or landscape architect.
Well, I'm saying it could be the business owner.
Well, that's a design. He'd be the landscape designer if he wanted to do it.
Okay.
That works.
If that's understood.
And if you wanna throw in what, what Mike's saying for, to meet all applicable laws, that's fine, you know?
But that's implied anyway, right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I do think it's implied, but just, I'm okay.
Then you'll, you'll be able to determine what the state's gonna, and the state's gonna say you gotta have an architect and when you don't.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do.
This leaves the door open for small-scale things, like you're talking about, that would not require necessarily.
Yeah, I know when it's architects, engineers, and that kind of stuff, but I also know that there's also a Stanford landscape architect.
Okay.
And we'll figure out exactly what levels are required and what, where they're not.
So Dale, this, this language just opens the door for the, the possibility of, on a smaller scale thing, somebody could do it themselves, or hire the landscaper to do it. I mean, that, believe it or not, that's what we do most of the time. Our landscaper does our landscape plan, and he's not a landscape architect, but he's skilled. Yeah.
Mayor? So Dale, would we need a definition of what a landscape designer would be? Or is that, is that just English language and leave it alone?
Well, I think if Mike's referencing what's required under state law, depending on the size of the project, you know, Dennis is saying it could be the owner, who says, well, here's, here's what I'd like to see in front of my little commercial, my little neighborhood commercial piece. And I don't have a lot to landscape, but this is, so it doesn't, it's not worth me hiring a professional landscape architect. I'll, I'm, I'm just gonna put these few things in, so, and then if Mike's saying, well, I'll, I'll verify, you know, if the state requirement is, that it has to be a, a professional landscape architect, then that's what's required. If it, if it's not required, then it could be just about anybody. It could be the owner, it could be a landscaper.
What, what about something like landscape architect, or whomever designs the landscaping?
Yeah.
That could be anybody. Is that satisfactory? There are several places that, that would have to have some modifications in, Mike, based on that, right?
Yeah.
Mayor? As we go down through the list, there's a couple of, if you're ready, I'd.
Yeah, let's go.
So line three twenty-two, designation, designation of hydro zones.
Three twenty-two?
Line three twenty-two. I think we're about there, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay. And then details and specifications for tree staking, soil preparation, and other planning work. I don't, I think those two should be taken out. I don't know what they do.
Who's gonna review that anyway?
Yeah.
Let's give you a handheld mic.
Me and a friend have talked about that, because he's doing a lot of the plan reviews right now. And I don't know how much time it would, would actually take to look at it. A lot of this would be done at TRC, so we'd have Benny's help with it, who would understand plants a little bit more. But there would be a little bit more time spent on, on the plan review, either at the TRC level or at the time that buildings are submitted for, for plan review, prior to issues of a building permit.
I don't see it being necessary, is what I'm saying.
I'm looking at three twenty-two on the version I've got of this, and that's not there, where?
Line three twenty-two?
Yeah.
Is it, it's in?
I've got a newer version, though, unfortunately, so.
Four point two B.
Four point two?
B, um, seven and eight.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing an irrigation plan there, but it doesn't say how much water you can use it as a certain square footage. Say you have a thousand-square-foot landscape area, how much water is allowed for that area? That would be a lot easier than if you're just looking at a system. Yeah, okay, I reviewed a system, but to what standard? So I haven't seen a standard yet, and in this, I just see that it's required to have a design. So why review something if there's not, not gonna be a standard?
So tree staking and soil preparation, that's for the survival of the plant?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with.
I'm not sure that that's a, Dale, that strikes me as not the city's concern.
I agree.
Mayor, so this, a- a- all of these requirements really get to what Dennis was bringing up. I think for smaller commercial properties, or maybe even a, a larger one. If I'm going to develop my own property, and I'm gonna do my own landscape design, this is a burden, and is it really, what's it doing, what's our goal? It's water conservation.
Exactly.
Right.
How, how is this burden helping with water conservation?
And that, yeah, and then the one down below, including manufacturer name and mode, model numbers? I'll give you, right now, I have a job in South Jordan where they missed, the, the city had this on their plan, they approved it, it got installed, and it's caused the job to go, because we can't even start it because of the weather, in the whole six months sitting on hold, now they've decided, because it would cost them a hundred thousand dollars to rip everything out and have us install new stuff, just because a model number and stuff wasn't correct. And that's for their own stuff, not even for commercials. Why do we care about that from a commercial side?
So Mike, you're, you're suggesting that we just remove that, because it's, for, for one thing, it's not, from the practical side, we're simply not gonna be reviewing or enforcing that. We're not gonna go look at how they plant the plants.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and to what standard? I would need a standard of gallons per square footage to go off of to say, yeah, this is compliant for water. It's saving so much water because we've allowed so much gallons per square foot, or.
Oh, I see.
Something like that, there's a standard. Here, it's just, hey, please design your system, and that's, that's about it, all I'm seeing so far.
Secondary water.
Yes, so use secondary water and keep your plants alive.
So Mayor?
The motivation, really, in this is the property owner. If I'm gonna spend money to put plants in, I want them to live, so I'm gonna try and do things right, right?
So we, what we do is, is we go back to line two eighty-three, required documentation. We keep in that number one, and just say, you, you know, you have to pre, you know, give us a plan, but we take out all the specific requirements, line two ninety-two, all the way down through line three fifty. And maybe we go beyond that, but at least we take out those specific requirements.
This version you sent, yeah, today, I think, or yesterday, or whatever, lines don't match up, so I'm gonna jump back to.
Oh, yeah, no, the, the new one won't, yeah, 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 because we added stuff.
So I'm gonna try and get on your page.
Okay, so good, so happy written.
That would be amazing.
Does that make sense?
For the mayor to get on my page, no.
So we, we keep in line two eighty-three to two ninety, so we're requiring documentation, but they're just gonna give us a.
What their plan is.
A package of what their plan is, and we're not gonna specify everything that needs to be in that documentation package.
Because our goal was, is twenty percent vegetative cover, and we can add anything in there, and you have to keep them alive. And that's our goal. And, and if they die, then we have, as a city, we have ability to go back and say, hey, you need to replant those plants, they're dead.
And if in the future we find that we're running into problems, and we really do need to define what a package needs to contain, well, then we change the ordinance.
So maybe something as simple as, as adding the sentence, planted or installed.
What you're trying to do.
And. Irrigated, no, it's not gonna work. All right, the, the idea that, that they're installed in such a way that they'll install and maintain so that the plants survive, I mean.
But I think that would be the applicant's goal anyway.
Yeah.
But I think, I think it's reasonable to make that assumption, that it's, my goal as the developer to, to have some irrigation to my plants so they survive.
But what happens is, is as time goes on, they change ownership, and we don't have any way to go back and tell them to replant.
Yeah, Dale, we, we don't have that authority right now anyway, do we?
Well, if we, we put in this agreement, we do.
Well, yeah, we just review the plans at the time the development goes in, we don't, I mean.
Say somebody was complaining about a commercial site being unsightly, would we have the authority to go tell them to replant?
I can't think of a case where we've, we've had a code enforcement, of course, we haven't had a specific code. We just said a landscape plan is required with the preliminary plan, I think.
How about something as simple as installed and maintained according to industry standards to maintain the survivability, or for the plants to survive, or something like that?
Yeah, I, I think that works, because, you know, some of the drought-tolerant plants, you'll water for two or three years and then turn loose on their own, and the, the goal is that they sustain themselves once they, you know, establish their root system.
I think that's a misnomer, because plants grow where water's at, and in the desert where there's no water, they don't survive very well. But it does, they do, they have a better chance of survival in our heat.
Well, there are people out there working on a couple of projects who, who'd actually say, yeah, you, you do give them water for a little while, and then they survive on their own.
I can show you, when I looked at today, the city did, and it's not surviving.
Always exceptions, but.
Okay.
Dale, so if, so if, as long as we make mention that, that the expectation is that you're gonna do this in such a way that the plants live.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit subjective, but that's the, that's the goal of everyone. So you're, you're kinda playing into the, the owner's hand, you want, they want the plants to, to live if they're gonna spend money on it.
Yeah.
But you don't, you don't have a, a check-the-box list of things that you can say, okay, this is, this plan is compliant.
Yeah.
It's a little bit subjective.
And you're not, these aren't things you're gonna check. These things that were.
If, if you read the next one, plan review, construction, inspection, and post-construction monitoring, that one is what worried me, because then you are talking about extra staffing, maybe a water czar, or something like, some, some places have, but, yeah, you're, you're talking about, the city of our size, a lot of, a lot of work to, to keep enforcement up of, of what the water conserving district's trying to do here.
Mayor? I would assume that if you have a commercial building, in a commercial business, you're gonna want it to look good on the outside to attract people to go into it. So you would, you, you just by saying, maintain your plants, water, you know, I think that's probably enough. I don't think anybody that's got a business is gonna want it to look uninviting from the outside by letting all their plants die.
Is everybody okay with this idea of installed and maintained according to industry standards? Because there are standards for how you, how you plant, how you irrigate, and, and the watering schedule you use to maintain.
I don't think we need to overthink it, you know?
The only, Mayor, the only thing I found was in Phoenix, there was neighborhoods that they kinda trend downward, and all the landscape died in front of the commercial places, and there was no avenue for the city to say, hey, you gotta keep that up. And so that's what I visualize, and even in Salt Lake, you can see that. So, and maybe it's not here, maybe it's in the development agreement, we put that stuff, I don't know.
Well, dead plants use less water.
Yeah. And they create, and they, and they create more heat and erosion. That's their thought process, and you just told them it's okay.
I'm, I'm lobbying for this, installed and maintained according to industry standards, and that just.
Go for it.
And we don't have to enforce anything. If they die, that really is, the, the owners, it's the biggest loss to the owner than, than anybody else, right? And you're right, in commercial environment, there's a motivation to try and keep things looking right.
Mayor, this is for Dale, is, is good faith a legal term? Is it something we wanna use here? Like, in good faith, you're going to do?
The definition will vary with different individuals is what good faith is. But I, I think there may be enough, just on what the mayor said, and maintain according to standards.
The week other.
That if there was a complaint that all the vegetation, all the landscaping died, then we could actually go in and enforce this ordinance and say, you did not maintain it according to standards. And so replant it and start over.
Yep.
Every once in a while, I get one right.
And then Mayor, then for Mike's point, item number two is what scares him. So the plan review, inspection, and post-construction monitoring.
Where are you? What line now?
So this is line three fifty-two. So again, we get to the issue of, are we dealing with a landscape designer which just might be me on my small property or a, a licensed professional? Because this would be difficult for me as the small property owner to comply with, wouldn't it?
You're saying take this out?
I, I think so.
Mike, you're saying take this out?
Yeah.
Love it.
So let it be unwritten, so let it be undone.
That's great.
So the only thing I'll bring up is that on line three sixty-six, which we just took out, number D, just so you know, Santa Clara kept this in, and they added, the certificate of substantial completion must be accompanied by a certification from the landscape architect, that the landscaping, irrigation, and related improvements have been installed consistent with the approved landscaping documentation package. Just for information, that's what Santa Clara did, but I think that this is problematic for us to deal with.
Yes.
I mean, an ordinance you can't enforce is useless, right? That's kind of the pointed hand here. All right, that moves us to chapter five. So once again, we, this is where we get on item three, or line three ninety-five. Park strips and other landscape areas less than eight feet wide. I, I, I just think we take out that eight feet wide. Park strips and other landscape areas shall be landscaped.
Where are you at again?
I'm on line three ninety-five.
Other landscape areas, what does that mean?
Yeah, you'd have to take out other landscaped areas then, because.
The park, the grass on the park is another landscape.
Yeah, right, you can't not have a park.
Park strips, take it out, or, yeah, I agree with the park strips.
So you're saying parks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dennis.
No.
Maybe we say park strips and landscape buffer areas.
Yes, that's, that's what we've got.
That's what you mean.
Because there will be usable areas where you'll have grass, whether it be a, a sports field or, as Centier showed on their plans to the planning commission, they had a kind of a wedding reception area where, an event area where it would be grass. And so if we just said other landscaped areas, then we'd say it, it can include grass. But if we say park strips and, and landscape buffer areas, then, then I think the sentence would read right.
Or even just landscape buffers.
Yeah.
And by, and by the way, on three ninety-two, Mike, that's another one that has to drop back to ten.
Hey, Mayor.
Any heartburn with, with that first paragraph, though, as we begin in three eighty-six?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Mayor, they were talking about that presentation at the planning commission, that might be a good one for city council to see, too. Because I thought it was very informative.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Okay.
Yeah, that was good. Okay, we get through there now, we're down to ten point, ten dash five, point two, tree selection. I don't know anything about this, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
So the, the only changes or comments from Santa Clara St. George is on four eleven, line four eleven. Santa Clara changed from shall be selected to are recommended, which is much looser. So narrow columnar trees shall be selected or are recommended.
I like that, are recommended.
Mayor?
Yes, Lance?
On the, on, when I read through this, one thing that, that comes up when I talk to people is, is with trees is the neighbor, okay? I don't know if we wanna get into it or not, but that, that is something that we, you know, view sheds and stuff that people think about all the time, and we do it in our areas, but a neighbor puts a pine tree and that other neighbor decide, you know, that's why they bought their lot. So I'd say, just, I wouldn't wanna make it like a management thing, but just a statement saying that, you know.
And this is commercial, too, but to your point.
Yeah. Well.
Yeah, the difficulty with that is, one thing for an HOA to enforce that, and they, they go and say you can't have a tree within ten feet of whatever, tough thing for the city to, yes.
This chapter is in any zone.
For all zones.
This chapter five is any zone.
Excuse me, thank you.
Yeah, so it's everything.
Good point.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of jump to commercial, and then we jump back to everything now.
Thank you for, yes.
And I'm not saying we wanna make it so, I'm just, I'm, what, what I like to do is just, because it says should are, what was the word we used? That make it so it's under, it's a statement, not that we're managing it, okay?
Are recommended.
Yeah, we're recommending to be, with placement of trees, be, be cognizant of your neighbors or some verbage like that.
Did you catch that, Mike?
No.
No, sorry.
Oh, thanks.
He, he's making a, a good point. I don't, once again, I don't know how you put the language to it, but that planting trees, it's great to have trees, but they, here we are, gone to great length to address view shed and so forth, and trees can be, certainly be a major obstruction to that. But wow, we'd get into a pretty complicated.
Yeah, well, we did, we already had this problem when we wanted, the city wanted to plant trees along.
Ninety-one.
No, along the center street, Snow Canyon Parkway. And so it already, that problem, people are aware of it, and they told us, no, we don't want you to take away our view shed. So I can see if a commercial place come in and they're, so anyway, that's just conversation that people have with me all day long.
So we have this section, tree selection, maybe as part of the prouled to that is we, we bring up the, the need to protect the view corridors. I mean, again, that's subjective.
View corridors and, and view sheds, you know, which, which is somewhat respectful of your neighbors' view, too.
Um, Mayor, I mean, section E talks about tree placement, right? Shall provide canopy cover, and so maybe we put something in that, in that last one.
Yeah, that'd be a good place.
That would be the place I would say we would put it.
And I don't want it so the city becomes, you know, police, but I think we should just make just an awareness. If we're talking about, right now, we're just telling them, hey, these are some selections you can use. Please be, you know, aware of your neighbor or whatever, you know, so.
So Adele, you're saying in, in E, include the idea of, and avoid conflicts with existing trees, protect view corridors and view sheds?
I, I think that's where, to me, that's where it logically goes.
I agree.
Because it's not so much.
Is everybody okay with the others of these? I mean, broad canopy trees where you're screening tall objects, I don't know, it strikes me.
So anywhere where it says shall be selected, we are going to substitute are recommended, correct? Is that what you're saying in everywhere in this whole section?
Well, except for B, because under utility wires, right, that's probably, that probably should be a shall.
We're not having any more utility wires, so it won't matter.
Mayor, I have a, a comment, too, and, and I know it's kind of universally applied, at least by Santa Clara, but since this applies to any zone, I think we gotta have a statement in the top paragraph, fruit trees are accepted. Like, and maybe not broadly, if you're worried about under utility wires or whatever, but if someone wants to plant a fruit tree in their yard, they need to be allowed, and they're not necessarily water conserving type things, but I, I feel pretty strongly about that.
Mayor?
Yes.
And Santa Clara did do that, and it's sort of the farm-to-table concept, and it's a, a good idea. So maybe in that first paragraph, starting at four hundred, say, trees shall be suited for water-efficient landscapes. However, fruit-bearing trees are.
Nut, nut trees.
That's, yeah.
Are accepted, right?
Yeah, or how loud.
Are allowed.
Are allowed, yeah, that's good.
Fruit and nut trees.
Are encouraged, no.
Yeah, I like that.
So Mayor, on line four eighteen, I don't know if that's something we wanna require. Because you, you can, if you were in a tolerant situation, they can go turn the other ones off, you know? To run two lines throughout there.
We're not, we're not checking the hydro zones anyway, right, Mike? We're not sending an inspector out to verify that, how, how their sprinkler.
So take it off.
Well, yeah, that would be on the plans, though, it would show.
Oh, yeah.
Commercial, it could show that, just so we could encourage it, but I don't know if the enforcement would be.
There is a reason to have trees on a separate hydro zone, though, because their, their water use is different than other plants.
We, what we do is we actually put on different size nozzles for them. And so if you, if it's a tree, you put a two gallon per minute. If it's a little plant, you put a half gallon. If it's, you know, depending on the type of plant, that's your hydro zone, I guess.
Mayor?
Yes.
And Santa Clara took out that section beginning of four eighteen.
Oh, do they?
So what do we do?
Take it out.
Take it out?
Yeah, sounds like it. Everyone agree that just goes away?
Yeah.
Unless you wanna just put, to be encouraged, so.
I don't wanna encourage it.
Mayor, when you're talking about all zones, I, I don't think, you know, if this was just commercial, I'd say we could, it's okay, but to do it for residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Keep us on that bus, yeah.
What?
Keep us on that bus.
Keep us on the bus of what we're talking about.
This is all zones.
There you go, okay.
Well, I was on that one totally.
That brings us to four twenty-two, irrigation design standards. Once again, I've been associated with this my whole career and don't know the technicalities of it that well. So Dale, things like pressure regulation and irrigation, the controller, now that, that is something that's important. Of course, even if you're not gonna enforce, if there's something that, that for safety reasons or, or preventing leaks or whatever ought to be a requirement, whether we actually enforce it or not.
On a final, it wouldn't be hard to look for just that, because you're in the garage anyways. Just say, you're required to have an irrigation controller.
At least it's water.
Um, but not hold up a, a house for it, but just make note of it. But that wouldn't be hard to, to remind contractors.
Because these actually came across as really reasonable to me.
Mayor?
Yes.
So on, on that line four twenty-nine, again, the term water sense, so we should also add in, or at least as efficient?
Yes.
And what line are you on again?
Uh, four twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was brought to our attention that there are other controllers and other, for example, fixtures and so forth that are equal to or even more efficient.
So are we, are we saying we want to require a, a controller that changes with the weather and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, well, that's, that's earlier on a requirement, too.
Yeah, I don't agree with that, just because of the use of them, I've seen them, the weather, I've found that some of the weathers, they measure in different areas.
This is a huge one to the district, I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the smart timers.
Yeah, I, I don't, I haven't seen them function that well. I know.
The district refunds money to you for doing them, don't they?
They do.
Mayor, Mayor, can I ask Lance a question? Lance, when you say not function well, meaning they don't work and we, we use more water than we ought to have, or what do you mean?
They're more, for, for a, a normal home use, residential use, they're more complicated and they don't seem to, you know, the, the way it senses and stuff, we're having a harder time with them working in soils I've seen.
Boy, the data, the data would just, would go completely against you. I mean, the, the studies say that they make a huge difference.
But they were done by water sense, no, I can't.
Maybe, well, I'm an idiot when it comes to that stuff, so.
Ford's is their number one, and Dodge does, too, but that don't.
And we did say we're gonna water sense label or equivalent, basically, or.
Well, but the, what I'm getting at is, is, is requiring that caliber of a controller.
So if, if you guys don't think that these are unreasonable, and, and they are just, they are just the way irrigation systems ought to be put in, the way I read it. But you get down to force, line four sixty, and we have a different watering ordinance, Dale, right? Don't we have eight to eight?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we should change that. Eight to eight, same great rate? Now, and, now.
Mayor? So, so Dale, if we, if we elsewhere have a requirement that watering is eight to eight, does it even need to be addressed here? Because that's something that could be a variable at some point.
And that's true, it is addressed in a different ordinance.
Or is it better to be here, even if it's duplicated somewhere else?
Water conservation.
It is water conservation, yeah.
I believe it is.
Then we would need to double-check the, the months as well, and I don't recall what our other ordinance said.
We don't want, we don't want a conflict.
And then you've got this really threatening sounding item L, water waste prohibited, and it talks about, but, but there's, it's just basically saying you can't waste water. Once again, nothing that gets enforced, really, but not a bad thing to leave there.
But if you have a smart timer and they're working, so contractors, they set their landscaping before they sell their house at a certain level to keep them, get the root system growing. And so after a year, if you don't take back your water settings, you're overwatering. So the smart sensor should work with that, if they're installed properly. Then you don't have to worry about that, i- if, if it has a smart sensor.
Thank you. Is this one of those things we can just leave in and see if there's any problem with it later on?
I'd like to see what people's in their public care and will see.
Because, Mike, don't you just see these, you can just stay there. Don't you just see these as, this, this is just the way irrigation systems ought to be installed, as I read through those? They're not saying you must. Oh, yeah, shall be. Well, so that we don't completely undo the districts. Mike, you okay with that staying? Were, were there any recommended changes?
No, well, I'll just, I'll just run through what we've, what we've gone over here, that, what others did. So on line four thirty-six, item number C, Santa Clara eliminated that requirement completely. Line four forty-three.
Which one do you say?
Santa Clara eliminated a portion of this requirement, the portion that says sprayhead to drip conversion for rehabilitated landscape sites may be, may be acceptable with city approval of irrigation plans. That, that second sentence.
They just deleted it all?
They deleted that second sentence.
Do you favor those changes?
One of their council members is a landscape guy. So I wonder if those were his inputs.
I'll bet.
Probably.
So then maybe we oughta.
Take out that second sentence, and then also take out the line four thirty-six, item C, or leave that.
Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
I believe that's what Lance was talking about previously, was that he uses the same system to water different plants, just uses a different.
Yeah.
And so that would be a good thing to take out, because that's saying the same thing.
Yeah, and you're right, I, I'm sure their city council looked to, what's his name? Yeah, and you're right, I'm sure their city council looked to, what's his name?
Is it Ben?
Yeah, Shakespeare.
He's a contractor, builder.
No, then who am I thinking of?
I think it's Ben, Ben was the one that was chiming in on all the water-related stuff, but he might not be the one.
Yeah, he's the general contractor out here.
Okay.
And then they took, uh, Santa Clara took out, uh, line 451, took out that whole one, and also 454.
And not 458?
Um, no.
I don't, I don't know, 458, I don't know whether that matters.
So 451, 454. Going, going.
Yeah, 451, 454.
Well, we're, I mean, we're operating, we're operating on the assumption that they had, that they had some expert commentary on that, right?
Okay, and then line 460, um, where am I?
Let's jump on 458 first.
Santa Clara increased the time from September to October, but what Dale's saying is, I just need to check and see what we already say that the months are, and we'll use that at this point.
Actually refer back to the ordinance for it, and that way, if it changes, we don't have to go change this.
Oh, good point.
The area, wherever the, wherever we say that time.
Yeah, we do have time, we do have that set. So 458, "Filters and end flush valves shall be provided for drip irrigation lines." Anything we'd ever look at? But once again, I mean, these are kinda put in there, in part, just as suggestions, even though nobody's gonna actually go out and look at it, is that something that's important? I don't know.
We, I've never, I've installed filters, but I don't install flush lines on the end in this environment, flush lines are usually...
Of course, you're not a landscaper, you only play one on city council.
I actually landscaped thirty homes in...
So what were you saying, what were you gonna say?
What I'm saying, I've been around landscaping a lot, is the flush lines on the end, a lot of those, what I understand, and like I said, I'm not a landscaper, but I've seen, been around a lot, is those are usually where you're trying to keep, for freezing, you know, purposes.
I see.
So, we don't really have that problem here, usually, so...
So you're saying that that ought to go?
Yeah, if you wanna leave the filters part, it's the end flush that I don't...
Oh, oh, yeah, for winterizing, right.
Yeah.
So strike in flush valves.
And there might be another purpose, but I'm not a landscaper, so I can't tell you.
Once again, we got six months, and if we need to fix it, we can...
That's right. Mayor and Lance should say, "I'm not a landscaper," but what's that commercial, "But I did stay in a Holiday Inn Express last night," right? That's what I kept thinking.
So I'm gung-ho, baby.
I'm like, okay.
Haven't seen that one, I guess.
And then on line 468, St. George had a note about the recommended times in this section, and they said, "A suggestion is not enough for an ordinance, and the schedule's too generous, and they need to discuss it more." So I guess that's a question for Dale, is, this is really just a suggestion, which...
Why don't we just change that to the WC, WCW's, or whatever they are, one of their board candidates?
What they say.
That, yeah, it's recommended to follow their schedule, which is...
For once a week?
And I was gonna make a recommendation here to take off the website, since this is an ordinance, there, that may change, just say, "We're gonna follow their period, not as noted on their website."
And you could just start out with, you could void that whole first sentence and say, "The generally recommended watering schedule is..."
Oh, okay.
Or the, WC, WCW's recommended watering schedule is, 'cause it really is, no matter how you spin it, it's mostly informative, right?
Yeah. With our smart monitor, or...
So maybe we don't need this schedule either.
You don't need this, 'cause it's gonna tell it what it needs to.
That's the St. George recommend, question, is, is, it's just a recommendation, and so what are we enforcing, this is an ordinance, right, an ordinance enforces something, we're not enforcing a recommendation.
Yeah.
I'm, Mayor, Mayor, I don't even understand where they're coming, I've, this, there's a big giant sign like this in the lobby of our office, and I'm like, where do they get this from? Does anybody wa, do you guys water from November to February? Mine's shut off. I didn't start watering until maybe, I don't know...
April 1st.
Yeah, just a couple of weeks ago or so, but I don't know who's gonna water once a week all during the winter, the grass is supposed to go dormant.
So Mike, you're saying, you're both kinda saying, "That just ought to go away," but should there be a, some kind of a general sentence, though, that, um, watering should follow best schedules or best practices, or something?
If you want to say, "Google it."
Watch a YouTube.
Maybe I'm off-base here, but I look at the ordinance as being, "These are the things you have to do," and this section is, "Here's what we suggest you do," and, well, suggestions are there, we put them in the newsletter, we've got that A-board outside, those A-boards...
So you just strike that because it's...
Just take it out.
It's not ordinance material. That, you all agree?
Yep. All right. Oh my gosh, just cut it down to zero.
Mike, look where that brought us.
To the end, well...
Kinda.
Kinda, sorta.
Here's Mike's draft on multifamily.
So I would suggest that Mike takes this back one more time after everything we talked here.
Yeah.
And bring that multifamily down.
I can improve it.
Well, let's take a quick look at multifamily and the resort thing, 'cause he's gone to great, a lot of work here, and I don't, I think we go through it quick. And, by the way, on the, on the basic ordinance, there are a couple of things I'd like to, I'd like to amend after doing some research and driving by the triplex. I think the triplex is where the multifamily starts, it, I was wrong, it, those things are a quarter block long, it doesn't look like a single-family house, and a lot of duplexes do. I don't know if you agree with that, but I was one lobbying for triplexes to be part of, you know, not part of multifamily.
Oh, yeah.
No, I think the line gets drawn on duplexes, personally, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
The other thing is, reading about water features versus pools, um, help me, who sent us that again?
Lisa Rutherford.
Lisa Rutherford sent a really interesting study that showed how water, why, why water evaporates, and there were several reasons that that occurs. One of the main ones was water in motion, so, um, water flowing down a stream, or water coming off a, so water features, basically, have a higher evaporation rate than water sitting in a pool, and last time I sug, wait a minute, this is a suggestion I just passed on to you, right, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
So my suggestion was, let's treat water features kinda like we're treating pools, and say that the size of the tank creates a restriction on grass, once again, just like pools do, so if it's a 500-gallon tank, I would recommend that, that twice the number, twice the number of gallons is the, is the number of square feet that are removed from your, from your grass area. I built a home very recently, where they wanted no grass whatsoever, but they've got a little stream coming off the top, and I'm certain that that home uses less water than one that has a lot of grass area on it, and I'm just suggesting that water features are more similar to pools than anything else, and we've treated pools, we've connected pools to grass, and it strikes me that water features ought to be the same thing. And, and then, then we get away from, you can only have, you know, five, 50-gallon things, it's, it's like, okay, you can put in a bigger feature, but it's going to impact the amount of grass you can have, because the net is that we're only, we're only gonna let you use so much water on that, on that, on your lot.
And you're ultimately limited by the amount of grass that's permitted, that eight percent, or whatever we end up with.
You are, so it's a trade-off, and I think we ought to have trade-offs, because then somebody like my buyer can say, "Well, yeah, I'm happy to give up the grass, but I wanna have this, I wanna have this little stream bed," and, I mean, it's a, turns it into a buyer's option, and...
When you talk about, this is how interesting it becomes, you know, different type of water features, if it runs over flat material, it gets hotter, they, oh, they use a lot more, if you run over rock, that gets mossy and stuff, it uses a lot less, so it's, you know, people, every time you make a statement, there's ten more sub-degree categories.
Generally speaking, if the water is moving, it's evaporating at a faster rate than water sitting in a pool.
Yes.
So are you okay with that, the suggestion?
Yeah, I actually wanted to comment on this.
Please do.
Okay, so, a water fountain has symbolism, bless him, so it symbolizes life, truth, change, fountains and water sources have played an important role in history and are essential to life, even water itself is a symbol of purification, we can find different symbols, paintings, and writings on fountains, which indicates the significance and power, so, it's a beautiful thing, so I kinda like your idea, that if that's their choice, then that fits into the formula.
I like the idea of flexibility, I've always kinda advocated, even with the district, that there be some formula for allowing people to decide where they're gonna use their water, right? At the end of the day, the hope is that we restrict the amount of water that's being used on lots to some reasonable amount, right? But I would love for that to be my choice, yes, I wanna have a bubbler, it's, it's a 50-gallon thing, I'm willing to give up the hundred square feet of grass.
Brings you some Feng Shui, Feng Shua.
Thank you.
Heaven knows I need that.
Do I do okay with that, Mike?
All right, gang, I'm gonna jump to multifamily, do y'all have a copy of that?
Yep.
Now, we don't have lines here. Mike, you know what, it strikes me, you're the one who, who spent all the time to author this, do you wanna kinda lead us through this? No?
Yeah, or, you know what, I didn't think about putting lines on this, but I could.
No, it's okay.
It's pretty short.
And, and maybe give us, as you, as you lead us through this, your rationale for some of these, these things, or where they came from.
Okay, so, we talked at the work meeting about really separating multifamily, creating a separate chapter for it, so we already, the Conservancy District's ordinance already had five chapters, so I just started calling resorts, chapter six, and this chapter seven. The idea here is that chapters one and two apply to everybody, chapters three is only for single-family, and now duplexes, chapter four is only for commercial, non-residential. The chapter five that we just went through is for everybody, but not resorts, resorts, I'm breaking that, I'm putting, resorts are gonna be total standalone, so resorts will only have to apply to chapter one, which is just a general applicability statement, and chapter two, which is definitions, then the rest of this whole ordinance, resorts only deals with its own chapter. Multifamily will still deal with what's in chapter five, but it doesn't deal with what's in chapters three and four, it's replacing chapters three and four, so, I made another note here, so because it's that way, really, multifamily should probably be called chapter five, chapter five should be chapter six, and then resorts comes in at the end, so that everything flows logically.
Is everybody okay with us just doing that? I agree with you, that makes...
Yeah, I think you meant four, but that's okay.
Yeah, I meant some number.
Yeah, it's okay, you'll figure it, it's good.
And...
You're going to number them in sequence, so that they read in sequence?
Sequence, yeah. And so then, basically, what I did here is I combined the, the construction standards from the single-family section and from the non-residential section, so if we just wanna go through these, about, you know, so the water sense labeled fixtures, or at least as water efficient, energy star, or at least as energy efficient, and then we talked about the water features, so, limited to an aggregate capacity of 300 gallons or less, and recirculating pumps shall, so I, in here, I did take some liberties, so exterior decorative water features shall not be located as entry features at the development, so if they want a water feature, it's really connected to a resident, a resident, right? The capacity of the water feature in gallons shall be counted towards the allowed amount of grass, using one gallon equals one square foot of grass, so, Chris, you're suggesting one gallon equals two square feet of grass.
Yeah, I think if we're trying to, to connect it to pools, that's probably a fairer number.
Okay, then the...
And do we need, with that provision, do we need the, the 300-gallon provision? Yeah, maybe we do, it is a different animal.
Yeah, and while this is aggregate capacity, so if I'm building a 100-unit apartment building in Ivans, and I decide I want, how do I pronounce it, a nice little Feng Shui water feature at each one of my 100 units, that gives me three gallons per, per water feature, because it's an aggregate capacity of 300 gallons, or do we just take out the number of gallons completely, which means then I could have, like, a huge number of water features, but it would be a deduct from, from grass area, X...
So you've got the same eight percent allowable grass area for multifamily?
Yeah.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Makes sense, I haven't calculated, you know, if it, if it apply, once we apply it, we'll see if it makes sense.
Let me think this through, what are we saying about multifamily? So, in my brain, multifamily means more people, which means they need a place to go, so now, having thought that, what are we saying?
Well, he brought forward the same provision that we have in residential, that they can have up to eight percent grass area on, and that's based on the site, right, Mike?
That's, it's based on the, yes, the square footage of the property.
So, so if you're talking...
But it is, it is, I don't know, it's a different animal, you've got, generally, you've got guest parking, you know...
In reality, you may not have eight percent of the property as really landscaped area, right? I mean, you're gonna have your side yards, you're gonna have your setbacks, and you're gonna have...
So...
Pretty small...
You have more people, you're absolutely right, you've got more people per, you know, square, whatever, and they, and they need a place to recreate, but historically, multifamily has, has less amenity area than an average, than an average home would have for itself, so, I wonder if that number shouldn't be dropped to like five percent in multifamily, because practically speaking, they don't have as much area as a single-family home has per unit.
They're mostly, the, the outdoor space that you're going to see most typically is going to be a patio or a balcony, that's their outdoor, which isn't a grass area.
Or they'll have a communal play yard or pool.
That's what I'm thinking of, so, like, if we're, you know, on the other hand, we incentivize, hey, open space, and you have these, these amenities, I remember those discussions when I was on the planning commission, so, if they have a little grassy area, volleyball court, or whatever they're putting in, how is this eight percent influencing that or affecting that?
I don't think it restricts it at all.
Okay.
Given, given the footprints that we see on, on multifamily developments, there's not that much leftover land, once you get the, the drives and the parking areas and so forth taken out, so...
You're generally gonna wanna maximize the building footprint.
And, and with the, consistent with the idea that multifamily uses less water per capita, I think if you just put a lower number in there, and I'd throw out five percent, I mean, if you gotta, that would, that would give them a chance to have some grass, and if they wanna put a water feature at the entrance to every unit, then bye-bye some of the grass.
So, Mayor?
Yes.
I've been doing some study on what type of total square footage it takes for an 11 or 1200-square-foot footprint, and it's averaging between 4,500 and 5,000 square feet, so that's how much property I have to do to put 1,140 or 1,500-square-foot footprint for your townhome, so if you took that in consideration, eight percent of 5,000 is 400, right? I'm just giving you information to think about, I haven't thought it through, I don't know if that makes sense, I'm just giving you, I know it takes around 4,500 to 5,000 square feet per townhome.
It's fair to say, though, Mike, isn't it, that the, if you had a development plan come in for multifamily, there is going to be less land associated per unit than in any single-family zone.
Yeah, and I think Chuck's son's study was, was consistent with that.
So I guess I'm saying that since there is less land, that probably the percentage of the overall project ought to, ought to drop, and, once again, to your point, so they, they have a communal recreation area rather than a lot of amenities per, you know, for each unit, and so there'd be a grass area that five percent would allow, a pretty good-sized grass area, and if you wanna use that in other ways with a pool, 'cause the pool thing still applies, you notice, right? So I'll let you go on.
I mean, five percent would be, just say you had an 80-unit place, 5,000 square foot per thing, if you take that, that's 400,000 times five percent, that means you could have 20,000 square feet of grass on your property, right? That's not gonna happen.
And they won't do it anyway, because they won't be incentivized, 'cause they're gonna wanna build more.
Did I do the math right, I guess, does it make, I'm doing it quick, so I don't know.
If you dropped to five percent, sorry.
Yeah, no.
If you dropped to five percent, that's 25,000.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's plenty.
On how big an acre?
That would be four hundred thousand square feet, eighty units times five thousand, you know...
Well, how big, how big a piece of property are you talking about?
Four hundred thousand square feet, so about nine something point acres.
Yeah, so ten acres.
I can tell you real quick here, if I do the math here. Nine point one acres. So, that's probably, your five percent is, I'm saying, is still ample, is what I believe.
Did you take that lower?
No, I think...
Yeah.
Do you think that's fair, five percent?
I think five is fair.
And then, for that number one, for the grass area, and when we, in the work meeting, we were talking about, I don't think we came to a conclusion, but having a maximum square footage of grass for single family, so I left that language in here. But I think for multifamily, we just say it's five percent.
So, a lot of multifamily, sorry, a lot of multifamily will have small grass areas, right, behind the units? So, I could see where you could use up, you know, a fair bit of grass, but for actual activity, it's usually the communal area where they have an open space in the middle with a pool, and area to throw a frisbee and so forth. I think that might be a decent number.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then, two, again, prohibited in parking strips, landscape areas less than eight feet, and slopes over ten.
Let's make that consistent with the other one.
Right, it is, yeah. And then, landscaping irrigation installers shall follow the plans that have been signed and approved by the city. That was in the single family.
Oh, is that still in the single family?
I'm not sure, it might have been in the non-residential.
So, do you think we could put that so it's not in everyone, it's just a beginning statement like you were referring to, and we just refer back to it? So, we don't make a mistake, you know?
Oh, because, well, this is a self-contained chapter, then. So, you don't have to refer back to the single family section?
Well, I'm referring to our, the beginning of the, in the recitals, you know, how you refer back to, I don't know, just seems like sometimes we repeat it, repeat it throughout different sections, and it's saying the same thing, and then sometimes we'll miss one, and we did that.
You know what, though, boy, reading through one of these, if it's got a bunch of references back, that is hard to read.
And I agree with you, but we, I know right now we've missed one on the roofie, and that's why we have the problem we have. Because we, just one little word changes, when he reads it, it changed what, and if we miss one, we've taken away that credibility of our statement.
We just need to match language, right?
This, excuse, Mayor, this is in the, in section four.
The non-residential.
It's in the non-residential, the same one.
And then, number four, so we spent a lot of time just talking about that.
Talk about this again.
So, we'll just do what we did, right?
Where are you?
Number four, forty percent vegetative color, does that ring a bell?
I'm starting to like this more and more. Yeah.
So, you're gonna scrap, you're gonna just make it consistent?
Yep. And then, number five, if secondary water's available, each project shall connect to the system for all outdoor water use, so it's an if. And then, after that, so should we include from the district, sections four point two, the required documentation and the plan review? Since we pretty much scrapped that, I guess that answers that question, right? And then, just restrictive covenants in conflict with water efficiency standards. Dale, I guess that's just okay?
Yeah, I think so.
So, okay, on this one, go back to the first page, number C, the exterior decorative water features, what are we doing about the three hundred gallons?
I would just, I would just count the capacity, the total capacity against the grass in the same...
So, you can have, however, you can have as many gallons of water feature tank as you want, and it just gets a double count against grass?
So...
I mean, I think that's a fair thing, isn't it?
Well, think, I mean, that's, if you want a three hundred gallon feature, you're taking out six hundred, right?
Yeah, take out six hundred.
Does that seem...
A drop in the bucket.
So, you're saying it doesn't seem aggressive enough?
No, what I'm, what I'm asking is, I mean, this is okay for a single family home to say, let's limit it to three hundred gallons, if you want. But for multifamily, how big is the multifamily development? If it's a triplex, that's one thing, if it's a hundred unit development, three hundred gallons isn't very much, depending on how many water features you might have. So, do you just say you could have as much as you want, you're ultimately gonna bump up to your grass limit, or...
Well, you gotta remember, the townhome is sold to an individual. So, that individual, what right does he have? Because once the project's sold, that townhome is owned by an individual, he might want it in their backyard, you know?
These bubbler-type water features are very popular, and they give you a little sense of sound.
Noise, yeah, white noise.
And I could, I could see a bunch of people in a multifamily environment wanting to have one of those in their little patio area or whatever.
Okay, so this opens up...
Can we think about that?
Yes, this opens up a new door, you can look at multifamily as being one owner of a multifamily project.
Exactly.
Or you could look at it as the individually platted units owned by individuals. So, I think this needs a little distinction between the two.
Okay, so the apartments are owned by one individual, condos are owned by several individuals, townhomes are owned by several individuals. So, that, the multifamily, the apartment is the one that is different than the rest of it.
Yeah.
To the extent that you keep it, though, related to the size of the site, like the grass, and whatever is, whatever is done with pools and whatever, shrinks the amount of grass, you're still maintaining a conservation-oriented landscape, aren't you?
We are, I guess what, I wasn't, I wasn't making the distinction between a rental multifamily project and an ownership multifamily project. So, let's say...
Do we need to?
We do, let's say the eight of us are the eight owners of an eight-unit multifamily project. I own my home, you own your home.
I get my water feature in first.
And Lance already, he got his water feature in first, he got his three hundred gallons in, and so none of us can put one in? How does that even get regulated legally?
It don't, it's just... I think most of these regulations are kinda like the IRS, there's rules there, are they able to check everybody? No, but when there is a problem, you can be checked.
Well, I guarantee you're gonna be after that.
Well, it's the reality, what I'm saying is, we can't monitor everybody, but we can still have a rule, and if it becomes a problem, it's there to be enforced.
Yeah, and I don't know how you'd go beyond just whatever one comes, crops up, you know, deducted from that grass area. Unless you, unless you state that water features have got to be disclosed in the overall plan, as it's presented for approval.
But then, I'll come in, once I, the rest of you already bought your townhomes, and I come in today, I buy a townhome, and I dig a hole in the backyard and put in a hundred gallon water feature tank.
Figure that out, I don't know, I don't know how to help you.
Well, if it's individually platted, I guess we can make the requirement on the individual square footage of your lot.
Exactly.
If it's, if the plat is one eight-unit building, then it's based on the total square footage of the eight-unit site. If it's eight platted lots, it's based on the square footage, so I get the deduct, the double deduct on my water feature, based on I'd be allowed five percent grass in my landscape area for my plotted parcel.
Or, you have a total area of land, and there are eight units, or whatever, your percentage is one-eighth of that, right? Not necessarily what is attached to your unit, because there's common areas too.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
And take that scenario, say you have a ten by thirty, because most townhomes are thirty feet wide, maybe ten feet in the backyard, if, that much, that's three hundred square feet, so you're gonna allow them fifteen square feet of grass in their backyard.
Well, but if it's a percentage of the overall site, that's a little, that's a little more flexible.
But who's, in other words, when you start doing the individuals, the overall site is just for the HOA or the...
Okay. I'll play with it, but it looks like we've got this pretty much taken care of.
So, Council, do you wanna jump into resorts, or should we move on?
I move, we adjourn.
I'd suggest we move on, because we've actually gotten really constructive information from Sentier on a number of issues over the last number of weeks, and I didn't get this put together until yesterday for them to look at, and so they haven't responded yet, and I'd really like their comments first.
They have been.
They've been great.
And very responsible, there was nothing self-serving about anything they were hoping for.
That's correct.
Well, kinda, but, but not, not in terms of exaggerating water use.
They created favoritism in a couple of places, only, and the rest of it were such good ideas that we've changed other parts of our ordinance based on their suggestions. So, they've been a great participating citizen in this.
So, thank you, Council, two marathons, and we're quite a ways along. Item five B is to continue our discussion on the planning commission's recommendation regarding light reflective value in chapter nineteen of the Ivan City Code.
Mayor?
Yes.
With, with maybe Dave Robinson's permission, I'd like to move this to the next meeting, we've had a long meeting tonight, and I know you wanna get this done, it's been, it's been something you worked on for nine months, it's your baby, so...
So, I don't know about the rest of you, but I've gotten a lot of email about this. A lot of emails referencing one select new home in our, in our city that is not in an area where there's a development agreement, and it's bright white, and boy, it stands out. So, this debate really is gonna come down to where's the line between individual property rights? And the argument on that side is, we can do anything we want, and that's what the legislature basically said.
Mayor? What I'd like, if we're gonna just think about it, is I think we need to remember what we're trying to legislate. You know, what this is all about, because, you know, I'm gonna say Governor Cox signed the bill, took that right away from us, from single-family residential and duplex. But what this, I think we gotta remember is, is do we want a big townhome project that looks like that? That's what we're able to deal with in our guidelines. We're not able to deal with individual homes, we're not trying to. What we're dealing with is planned projects, if they'll sign a development agreement, we're dealing with town, townhome projects, apartments, commercial, those are the things that we can do.
I agree, but we still, we still want standards for residential, of single-family homes, because development agreements are often necessary for this project.
That's what I said, we can do development agreements, meaning people come in, because most developers, you know, there's a miss, if you go read, I got three or four letters from the ombudsman, I've been talking to him about this exact subject. And when you start reading about it, what he suggests is development agreements. It's not to get around the loophole, it's to let people that come in our community understand what we would like to see as a group of people. That's what, that's what that's for. Now, we're not taking away anybody, property rights are not a tangible item. They're, they're based on the ordinances, the laws, and all the governing documents that were on that property when you bought it. That's your property right. It's not just because you own a piece of property, you can do what you want.
I'm saying, though, that's the argument on that side, is that I should be able to do whatever I want, regardless of what the community wants. So, you know how passionate I am about this, and how offended I am by what the state legislature did.
Yes.
And I plan on, on getting a group of communities that are in similar situations as us, Moab, Springdale, and there are many others.
Park City.
Park City. And talking, I don't wanna get into details on this, but speaking with legislators, it, because it's now done, and the time to have stopped, it was when it was being done, and we didn't, we didn't prevail. But, I'm gonna try and get enough of a group together to come up with a, an exception. And what Lowry Snow suggests, I thought this was brilliant, is that if you are within a certain distance of a national or a state park, that that provision no longer applies. Because my comment is, if you, if you're building a building in a state park or a national park, you look at what's built, it's never anything but what is completely consistent with the, with the character of that environment, right? And I, and I think our stewardship as a city council is to, is to protect that. I mean, you just don't get that. I was talking to a real estate broker just today, who's dealing with a major piece of property here in town, comes from Colorado, and he must have, he must have talked to me for ten, fifteen minutes about what an incredible job our city has done to have it appear like it does. And he says, it's, it's a world-class place for people to come and enjoy this. And I still think that we ought to fight for our right to, but that's me, the non-voter.
I'll second it. No, we, literally, I spent four hours with the, between email and the ombudsman, trying to understand, because that one house is so offensive to everybody on the west side. I get more calls on it than, how did, they asked me how I let it happen.
It's Ivan's middle finger.
Yeah. So...
And Jenny, whatever we do, you're gonna keep us, well, you're gonna keep us between the posts, right?
I'm only one vote.
Well, and I have a question for Mayor and Lance, is you're pretty passionate about this. So, the example, we had, did have a letter from someone, or I was reading the minutes, I think, from the planning commission, on the house that was built up here in Old Town Historic District, and, and it was, it's a nice-looking house. But the question is, you know, what you're saying, Lance, and Mayor, please, we're really kinda saying, those that are coming in with four, forty-six units, or whatever, what about the, are we gonna come back and say to someone, they can't repaint their house a certain color? Do you know what I'm saying?
Right, right, now we can't do anything.
Right, so we try to have some guidelines and guardrails coming in, but if, you know, someone wants to paint their house pumpkin orange on two hundred, I guess they can do that.
Well, I guess that's where we lead back to that saying, you know, the statement, what are property rights? The minute you do that, you've taken away my rights to have what I want. So, it's, that's why there's a community, that they're not tangible rights, they're what the community wants. In all eighteen years I've been sitting here, these guidelines, we spend, I just read them again, the guidelines, we spent hours writing these things. I've, you know, Mayor Hart's been up here for many years, I've been doing it for eighteen years, and the whole thing has been focused on being subtle, respect your neighbor, because if you're subtle, you're not gonna offend your neighbor. If you paint that pumpkin orange, just this white house, how many letters have you got? It's offensive, because it doesn't fit in the neighborhood.
So, I think maybe the bottom line is, you're right, we're not gonna be able to prevent this, we haven't, now we can't, at least in some cases, right? But if you, if you have a statement that's backed up by a vision, and you, you say to people, this is really what this community's about, is all this, we hope at least you'll, you'll respect that, and if somebody doesn't, then they don't, right?
Yeah, and...
But you still have to have, you still have to have something for the person who wants to be respectful, to look at and say, okay, this is what, these are the lines I'm gonna stay in, because I want to be a, want to be a...
And, and one thing that, and I brought this up to Mike, too, and it's affected in building right now, is, is, this is what happened to us, is people in the historic township, there were little houses, you know, they're shorter houses, and they were building big, tall garages the side of them, right? So, what do we do? People started, their neighbors started complaining, we don't want that big garage next to my little house, so we created a rule. Now, we got a new building that's interpreting the rule, so they're adding five or six feet to the house, so the garage isn't taller. And we're spending a lot of wood and money doing that, which, that wasn't the intent of the rule, and I think we need to look at that rule to get it, because that's, that's as bad as the collar, you know?
Totally different issue, but yeah.
Well, but I'm saying, that's an example.
Your point is well-taken, I mean, it is. Mayor, particularly with regards larger buildings, multifamily, where we still have some control. buildings, multifamily, where we still have some control. And you're right, those, you know, if one single home can really stand out like it does, then that would be far, far more impactful. Yes, sir?
Let the commissioner speak, though.
Yeah.
Kerry's the only one yawning so far.
So, about two months ago, we had a gentleman come to commission, and he's actually a paint expert. He's worked in the paint field for about 25 years, I think it was. And he came there and explained a lot of this to us, and then when he heard what we were dealing with, he kind of had a little, "Why are you using LRV?" The point of this is what we're using to try and designate this. I don't want somebody to paint their house orange or anything else. But the fact of the matter is, is a lot of those colors actually fit within the LRV.
You're right. The chroma issue is huge. That's got to be a part of it.
And so, that's the problem. And I know what Lance is going to go for, because it's one leg of a three-legged stool.
That's right.
I've heard that before.
We keep hearing the color.
But that's the problem is, is what you've got now, is you've got a situation where now you're back to Mike again, going, "Okay, this is within the LRV," but now it leaves it to the city's discretion, which Lance himself even said, "We shouldn't let the city have their own discretion on things." You just said that earlier tonight.
And I agree.
And so, now you're back to the city's discretion, where it fits within the LRV, but does it really make sense? I'm saying the LRV, and this is what the commission came up with, is an absolute horrible way to try and judge this, and it doesn't effectively do what we need it to do.
So, you guys did, I respect what you did, and the idea of coming in with a color palette for a project, I don't know if we can legally get there, but I, we totally see your point, and I guarantee you, that's going to be a big part of our discussion, right?
I already know that, you even talked about it, that you have houses in your own subdivision that don't meet the LRV a while back ago, because we weren't governing it very well. And there's a lot of houses in, what's that?
Oh, mine do.
Oh, I thought you said that you had a couple that weren't. I apologize. I thought, anyway, it's okay.
The neighborhood, right?
Yeah.
Mayor, I think one of the, one of the...
Let's let him finish.
Oh, I thought.
And so, that's the point is, is that an expert in this was going, "I don't understand why you're using LRV. It makes no sense whatsoever." And the fact of the matter is, is we're still going back to the same factor of a discretionary decision by the city, because even if it fits LRV, there's somebody that's got to make the discretionary call that says, "Oh, that color is just not acceptable," even though it's within the LRV that we say is okay. So, LRV, in our opinion, from what we learned, is not a useful point of control for color.
Gotcha. We have a secret weapon on the council. It's called Mike. There will be a study on LRV. There will be a study done on chroma and...
So, Mayor?
But thank you. Mayor?
Seems he's made the statement towards me that I think LRV is, I don't think LRV is all hitting the wonderful thing, because I keep hearing that we're judging, and the other night, it's mentioned, "It meets the color, you know, that color meets the LRV." And I'm going, "What does that matter? That ain't what this ordinance says. That's just one little gauge. It meets, does it meet the surrounding area?" That's the critical thing.
You're going to be a major contributor in this, I know. And Jenny is going to, she's going to set up the...
She can't cry, though.
The gutters.
I can cry all I want to.
Going to get a strike.
Because I start crying.
Yes, Mike.
I'll suggest again that we move this to next meeting.
Is that counsel's desire? Counsel, you want to move this on to?
Yes, please.
So, I'll second.
Motion to continue. That's what you gave me?
Yeah.
Motion to continue.
I hear a second, too. All in favor?
Aye.
Off we go.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just note procedurally, we're having a lot of discussion to develop kind of the ordinance as you want to put it forth for a public hearing, because we haven't had a public hearing yet. So, we're not, this is not a discussion to come to a decision. It's just a discussion to massage the ordinance so that it's in a manner that you want to proceed to a public hearing with.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Counsel, I think we're to the consent agenda. Couple of sets of perfect minutes. Oh, no, wait a minute.
There is an expenditure.
Just have the one, huh?
Mayor, can I ask a question, maybe, of Dale? And I don't know if I procedurally have to separate the consent agenda, but it is about the street pavement maintenance.
Ask away.
Okay. Just in here, where it noted the staff did not receive any bids on the chip seal portion, so that will come back as additional cost, or was it included? Like, what are we agreeing to, I guess? I just want to be clear.
I think it's additional.
Will we see that number, or we already kind of, it'll be brought back to us, or they're just going to do it no matter what the cost is? That's what I'm wondering. And then is it within our budget, which I assume it is, but?
Hard to say right now. Yeah. It says, "Staff is hopeful that we'll receive a minimum of one or two quotes." So, we don't have anything on it yet, so it's not included in this.
Okay, fair enough.
So, we're not approving an open-ended contract, is that right?
The next sentence is, "This expense will be brought before council, I assume it is received."
I'm sorry, I missed that part. Okay, so, Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Please.
That we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Aye.
Movement, second, we approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I want to make sure.
Are you aye or are you nay?
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, let's jump to reports, beginning with Councilmember Anderson, who's giving one already.
I missed, didn't hear you.
This is reports.
Oh, I have no report.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
I have nothing, though.
Councilmember Johnson?
Just a reminder of the Princess Pageant this weekend at 7:00 PM on Saturday at the Snow Canyon High School. And I believe there are eight girls that are...
They had eight. Have any more dropped out? They had nine.
Maybe it's nine.
I think one dropped out.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was eight.
Yeah, it should be really nice. And they're all, they're all new to the pageant, so it should be really, really a great, great one. That it?
That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayor?
Just maybe a reminder, and maybe you sent it to me, Jenny, on Heritage Days, if you have information on when do they meet again and all that kind of stuff.
I can send you.
Then I can see what we can do to help out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott?
Mayor, I do have a report. I'm wondering if the council would like to take a dinner break first?
Okay, it'll be short. It'll be short. Chuck Gillette has been helping graduate students at Utah State University on a research project that's titled "The Growth of a Sustainable City: Envisioning the Future of Ivans." The students are going to present the results on April 26 at a special USU event, and we can join in by Zoom. There'll be three presentations starting at 2:00 PM on three different topics. Our topic is supposed to start at 3:00. So, I'll send an email out tomorrow with how to sign on by Zoom.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. And there are a couple of sharp young students, graduate students, that are working on this. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Dale, are you going to cover the remodel on the city hall?
I can, or you can. I was going to cover the league, at least, so.
Well, I'll just take this on. We got the bid information back. You all saw the anticipated exterior remodel on the old city hall for the new police station. When we got the actual numbers back after the architects and engineers got finished with the plans, it was double that amount. So, it was around $330,000 instead of $175,000, as we anticipated it might be. So, we sort of made an executive decision that this was too much. In fact, even the contractor said that this was too much money for what we're trying to do there. There are other forces at work. Bob informed me that Santa Clara is ready to use the space that they are currently occupying. They would like them to get moved over into the new building. So, we met with the contractor today and just decided, hopefully you agree with this, that we're going to have them finish up what was in the original contract with a couple of change orders to make sure that it's done and ready, and leave the exterior alone at some future time when it may fit in the budget. I brought a design for a simpler version of what they'd done, but to get them in and have it usable, it's going to be disruptive if we ever remodel it anyway, whenever that is, and maybe there's going to be a better time sometime in the future to do it. So, we've decided that we're going to abandon the exterior portion of the remodel for some future design, and if we finish this contract, we're free to pursue that any way we choose to, doing it ourselves, or having somebody like Jeff Loras do us an engineered version of something, you know what I mean? And probably we can do that for quite a lot less money. The contractor suggested that would be the case. And he also told us that if they were starting this building right now, it would be 800, or pardon me, $8 million. So...
So, you're saying we better take that price over there?
No, I'm, well, I don't know. Could get worse.
Because it's only going to get worse, not better.
But the purpose was to beautify it only. There was no other purpose.
There was a purpose, wasn't there, Mayor?
What was it?
Wasn't the exterior to keep it from having water damage?
One of the added roof lines was to cover the stairway.
Yeah.
And we do need to get that done, and at some point, we should do that. And the roof, it doesn't make sense to re-roof it now and then tear off new roof to do a remodel. So, I think it's just the idea that maybe we put this on hold, get law enforcement moved in, figure out what a new, more reasonable plan might be, and then move forward in a year or so.
It's not raining, so we don't have to worry about it.
Well, Mayor, but to Jenny's point, like, so, if I'm understanding, you're saying we're pulling back, so in a sense, there's a $150,000 savings-ish?
Well, we're going to, the plan is, we would keep that in capital projects, because it's going to be needed. We do have the shingles purchased, and they will be arriving soon. They will be stored in an area in the firehouse, and so it may be six months to a year before we start on it, but it'll be, but before we can actually re-roof it, we're going to do a much simpler version to protect the side stairs, and then also just a simpler version to put a different roof and cover over the entrance. And that should be a lot cheaper than what we were originally looking at. And within the, it should be significantly less than the budget that we had originally planned for, instead of double that amount.
So, you're saying that we're still going to do the things that Jenny was saying we need to do?
Yes. So, the things that need to happen are the re-roof and that added roof. Thanks for bringing that up, because that was the one kind of functional thing out there that is important in the long term.
Wasn't there an issue with the front door, the way it was working for the police or something?
No, no, not really.
That's fine?
That was all cosmetic.
Okay.
And it was extraordinarily expensive to do what they were suggesting. Okay, Dale?
They'll be bringing their customers in through the back door.
Okay, Mike. Let's, if we adjourn.
Ready? No, they held off on the front. Dale, he has a question quick. They have, it's carpeted through most of the building. Essentially, if you were to walk in, except for the entry area that was going to be torn apart for this remodel, it's virtually done. So, they're going to be able to rather quickly get the inside ready, and we'll anticipate a move in the near future. We're still waiting on some light fixtures that have been back ordered for a long time, I believe, Dale, aren't we? Do you remember?
Well, they have some light fixtures that will go, I think, on the exterior. And we had some light fixtures back on the back side of the building, and that weren't always functioning. So, those will be repaired, and then we'll see what they've, we may have to add a fixture.
I think they are adding a couple exterior, but they were missing some of the interior fixtures a while ago. Maybe they've got them now.
I'm not sure on that.
Is the elevator still in there?
Yeah, the lift.
Yeah, the lift.
That's, we, when it becomes the police station, we're going to call that the torture chamber.
Cody hated that lift, I think, every time they'd come inspect.
He's referring to a little micro elevator that you basically go in and sit down, and it takes five minutes to get you up for. So, anybody who has claustrophobic issues would not want to use it. Dale?
Yes, the League Midyear Conference is going to be coming up, April 20 through the 22 in St. George. And so, if you can let Kerry know if you want to attend that, then she will get you registered for that. Is there a, you might need to check your calendar, so just send her an email tomorrow so that we don't miss registration. We don't want that to close.
The date together.
It's Wednesday through Friday. It's the, I believe it's the 20th through the 22nd.
Of April.
Yes.
Is this like the one we went to?
Not next week, it's the week after.
Yeah, this is their midyear.
The one we went to and certainly.
This is interesting, because they diagnose what happened at the legislature. It's really quite informative. If you can possibly get there, it's worth the time.
You want to go?
I'd like to go.
Okay, so, Dennis and the mayor?
Is it a one, is it a, it's all or nothing? Meaning, you buy three days, or you can buy one day, or like, what?
You can buy one day. Well, I think, I'm not sure on the midyear. The annual, you can buy like a Thursday, which used to be planner's day, and now it's also recorder's day. But, so...
I think I'll try going.
We'll let you know if there's distinctions.
Yeah, I'm interested. I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Dale. Items to be placed on the future agenda, anyone?
Mayor, it was mentioned, the table of uses, non-residential, Table 33-2, that will be coming forward with a few changes. I assume you want to see that first. It's not going to be any, I don't think there's any surprises there. We've talked all about it, but we'll put that on an agenda, and then that will be set for, if it's okay, then we'll set it for the next meeting after that, or a public hearing, because it is a zoning amendment, zoning text amendment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counsel, I should have done this in a report, but I had a conversation with Roger, what's his last name, the Utopia Guru, and told him that we have some interest in having him come and give us a presentation to show us what that would look like. I assume you're still interested in having that happen. Is it okay if I set that up for one of our meetings when he can be down here? All right, I'll pursue that. Okay. No cause to adjourn to a closed meeting, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Everybody moves it any second?
I'll second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Who got it?
Everybody moves it.
Kerry, who said it first?
No vote?
No, I did. Put it down, Kerry. It's the only part of the minutes I care about.
No. I can't, well, from 5 to 7? Here's why I can't. It's my son's air of light.
Take whatever worries you with and apply it to whatever nature.
I can fill in for anything that he can't fill.
I can do 5 to 6:30.
Sorry, what is your name?
We have a difference of opinion.
Okay.
I don't want to go.
Oh, yes, we did the comment. Citizen comment.
Uh-huh.
About the traffic.
Mike, I'm probably coming to all of them, if I can.
Okay. You got an apron?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Where's this Tuesday's one at?
So, Tuesdays at 5:00.
You're there 15 minutes later, you're walking through things with the commissioners. So, you guys understand what direction they're going, and you can see the maps and everything before you're...
You're talking about financial analysis, assuming recession?
And what time is that again?
This is something that keeps this guy up.
Seven forty-four.
Me, too. Me, too, with all the money that we need.
Yeah. Yeah. That was a good comment tonight about...
Me, too. With all the money that we need. Yeah. Yeah. That was a good comment tonight about.